All right. Welcome, everyone. This meeting of the Centennial School District Governing Board is called to order at 10:02 a.m. on Wednesday, July 30th. Welcome, everyone. I'm really excited as we get prepared to start our new year. We will go ahead and jump right into election of officers without any further ado. At this point, I will open the floor for any nominations for Chair. Did you? No.
I'd like to nominate David Lynn for Chair.
All right. Are there any additional nominations?
I'd like to nominate Pam Shields for Chair.
This is where it gets fun, because I have to say it three times. Are there any additional nominations? Are there any additional nominations? Sweet. So, we are going to vote by, we'll do the Board Chair and then we'll do the Vice Chair. We are going to vote by ballots. Missy has prepared ballots for everyone. So, you must write your name and the nominated person who will receive their vote and then sign the ballot. We'll pass, Missy, all of the ballots. She'll read them out loud. If a single nominee receives four or more votes, they'll be appointed to the Chair. If no nominee receives four votes, then the nomination process will be repeated.
Do we write both candidates on the ballot?
Yeah.
Do we want to? Would anyone like to speak? Actually, before? No? Okay. I was just like, did we do that before?
May I ask, though, that we potentially hear a sentence or two from our candidates?
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be good. Actually, can we pause on your voting for a second? I was thinking that we were missing something there. I would encourage David and Pam to go ahead and share maybe a sentence or two as to why you feel like you would like to be Board Chair. I don't know.
As you know, this is my last term of service to the district, being the likely district this time around, and I'd like to see some continuity in our leadership team with some experience, and I'd like to be able to offer that support to whoever the Vice Chairman be elected. That's the way I'm thinking, and I'd like to do that for us.
Thank you. Missy will come around and collect them. Facebook. Thank you. What's that? Yeah, if you would. So, Director Stanley selected Pam Shields. Director Mauring selected Pam Shields. Director Harding selected David Lynn. I should write this down. Director Newman selected David Lynn. Director Lynn selected Director Lynn. Pam Shields selected Director Shields. And, oh, I'm sorry, that was Chair Solowski selected Pam Shields, and Pam Shields selected Pam Shields. So, that's four votes for Pam Shields and three votes for Director Lynn. Congratulations, Pam Shields, our next Board Chair. At this point, I will open nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Will Mauring for Vice Chair.
Are there any additional nominations? Are there any additional nominations? Are there any additional nominations? Since it's just one nomination, I jumped really quickly after that third one, but I figured we were ready to go. So, we'll take a roll call vote because there's only one nominee. I will go around and we'll ask everyone who their vote is for. So, we'll start with Director Mauring.
I vote for myself.
Thank you. Melissa, Director Stanley. Okay. Jess?
Vote for Will Mauring.
Shields.
Will Mauring.
Mr. Newman?
Vote for Will Mauring.
David Lynn?
The only nominee, yeah, Will.
And I will make it official. Unanimous vote for Will Mauring. Congratulations to our new Vice Chair.
Thank you.
So, welcome to Board Leadership. I'm not going to make you jump in and lead this meeting as of this moment. I'm going to go ahead and finish it out, and then you guys can work with Superintendent Owens on agendas and stuff going forward, if that's okay with you.
That's fine.
Fantastic. So, our next order of business is our team-building activity. And this is one that we have done every year. I've asked people to bring in something that means something important to them, something special to them, and just so that we could get to know a little bit more about each of you as a human, as an individual. We're often really focused in our tasks here, but I like to remember that we're all kind of humans behind it. And so, I will start. I can't follow my own directions because I brought two, but I'll be less than a minute. So, this is my great-grandmother and my grandmother on this property in Oklahoma. We can pass that around. So, I've been doing a lot of family history. I actually, there's, we still own that property in our family and the oil rights. So, if you see Landman, it's like this whole thing really in Oklahoma. But I recently discovered a whole bunch of old family photos, and so I've had a lot of fun going through determining who's who, who's named for who, you know, like my mom's Barbara and her Aunt Barbara. I mean, like, it's been really fun looking at all the old pictures. And then the other thing I brought are just fun because I collect, I love Legos a lot, and I collect mini-figs. And so, I brought my favorite mini-figs. We've got the Queen of Hearts. We've got Gonzo. And then we've got the Robin Hood characters of Robin Hood and Prince John. Oodalali, oodalali. Golly, what a day. Okay. We can go. Anyway, would you like to go next? Pam, would you like to?
If you know me at all, you know that this is not a surprise. My brother, after the house fire, gave my sister and I pandas when I was six years old. And I've been collecting them ever since, and you will always find a panda somewhere close to me. And I do like this advice from a panda, be lovable, care for your habitat, chew your food well, live large, take it slow, cherish wild places, make a little pandemonium, and it seems to fit me pretty well.
All right. I brought a ceramic bear that I made in seventh-grade pottery class back in the day. The glaze is different. I screwed that up, so it's like you can see the shiny glaze and then the knot, the flat. But my dad was really cool. I brought it home, and he's like, "It's okay. I think it actually is better that way." So, thanks, Dad. And, but yeah, I thought it was appropriate since we're all here talking schools and school things.
I very rarely call directions, so I have three things. I have a gummy apple to represent my obsession with public school teaching and being on the board, going into my eighth-year report in public schools.
And returning to first grade, and there is very little I am more passionate about than teaching and education. Disney is a close second. Yes, obsessed. In fact, I will be there in two weeks. Third thing I'm probably most obsessed about is theater. So, if I'm not here on a Wednesday night, it's because I'm performing, currently performing in a show, and have worked solid for the last three years entering professional theater. So, it is like two full-time jobs, teaching and performing. So, it's a passion and a delight and a love, and I'll talk about it anytime. So, I always have makeup in my purse.
I brought, if you talked more than five minutes with me, you're probably not surprised that my kids are everything, right? And this was, this was taken a year ago when my wife and I celebrated 10 years of marriage last summer, and because the kids weren't around then when we got married, we reenacted some of our favorite wedding photos and included them in. So, this is the Brewery Rocks downtown. Because even though where we, we got married downtown, or had a reception, everything downtown. So, that was fun. And so, it's with that and every decision that I make, whether it's as a business operator, residential real estate company, a property management company, my service here, my service to habitats, my service at Oregon Realtors, it's all with them in mind, and how do I create a community and society and something that I'd be proud for them to grow up in and continue a legacy of service. That's why I brought that.
I clearly missed the memo and did not bring anything.
What are these pieces?
What's that?
I do have eye drops everywhere I go, and usually water or thermos. Hydration is critical, so.
You could have just been like, "I brought these eye drops."
Sorry. If I would have, maybe I thought faster on my feet. But like Will, family is near and dear to my heart. So, if you go to my office, you'll find tons of pictures of family and my kids growing up and just always surrounded by our Y and contributing to the community and our family and service out there. So, that's what gets me up in the morning, and that's what drives me is, you know, how can I leave things better than I found them and what contribution can I make to the overall success of the districts, our students' journey, or our community? So, thank you.
In my life, this is probably about 85 years old. She passed in 2012 at age 91, and a lot of her things were left in a house that burnt down in a fire on Maui. And I have a few of her belongings that I brought up with me, and so I cherish them because everything else is burnt, ashes. But she used this to hold some of her. She's very Buddhist. Some of her beads that she used when she prayed, and I remember in the morning she used to, there was just a routine. She woke up at the crack of dawn, washed the house, watered the yard, cleaned everything, made it nice and fresh, and then came in and had a morning routine that she practiced. And I was always there, sort of around the corner, watching her. Beautiful human being, wonderful, and instilled a lot of values and beliefs in my life that I hold dear to this day.
So, I brought my reading glasses, partly because I'll probably need them at some point during this meeting, but also kind of at the start of this year, I realized I was just spending way too much time in front of screens between work and at home, and any reading I was doing was basically work-related. And I used to be an avid reader, particularly fiction, and so I just kind of recommitted, like, "I'm going to read books this year." And I started in March. I have finished 10 fiction books since that time, just reading for fun, and so just kind of making that conscious decision to spend more time doing something that I love and I find really peaceful, especially during the summer. It's been great to just, like, sit in the shade at a park and read a book, so. But also finding that I really need glasses to do that at this point in life, so.
Okay. Well, I brought a picture of, this is a pew that sits in my front entryway of my house. It's a church pew, so I obviously couldn't bring it because it's about six feet long. And what it is, is my mother was an educational assistant in Gresham Barlow for a number of years, and she would help in, they had remedial reading classes at that time, that's what they were called. And so, students who were sitting outside of her classroom didn't have a place to sit. So, she decided to work with my dad and get a couple pews donated that aligned the halls of the school, West Gresham Grade School. And so, when she passed away a few years ago after that, they decided to donate a pew in her honor. And so, when they were doing some remodeling, they called us up and said, "Would you like this pew in honor of your mom?" Well, yeah, of course I would. And so, it sits in my front area right now, so my kids put their stuff there. I put my shoes there, and every time I sit there, I think for her. And a lot of students sat there, too, so.
Mister forgot the memo. But I would have brought something related to my daughter, and I guess I will share my tattoos on my left arm because these are all in honor of my daughter, Zoe, who is 15. And one is, this is a sound wave of her first cry when she was born, and that's the first time she wrote her name, Zoe Oh, because even though we thought we were really creative, there were three others, always in her preschool. Flower from the movie Tangled that was kind of very centering to her when she was little. She's a black belt in Taekwondo. She's also a dancer. So, I carry her in my heart and on my body always, and she's my Y. And in everything, in every decision I try to make for students, I try to think of them as my own child and what decisions would I want to be making.
I brought song lyrics. This is, I don't hear my own self, but I brought song lyrics, and forgive my humor, so they're my own song lyrics. And they've been really, they've really sat with me. I wrote the song a few years ago with these, this chorus has really sat with me the last few months, especially. "You're a flower growing in the darkness, a sanctuary in the eye of a storm, a cavalry of poems writing at the break of dawn, a fire burning bright against the sun." And really, the sentiment of standing up in darkness and being a bright point has been weighing especially strongly.
Well, my favorite things are my books and my library. You'll often see it in the background. I love books. I collect them. My oldest one is actually from my great-great-grandfather. It's from 1903. It's "The Commoner" by William Jennings Bryan. He was a Pony Express rider and also someone who had worked for Wells Fargo to take the gold from the gold mines to the San Francisco Mint and stuff like that. And one of the things he was always proud of is he never had to fire his gun ever in his life. And then the second one is called "The Far-Out Story of Vortex One." It's one of the favorite stories of Portland history that I like to tell people. Back in the movements for Vietnam, for peace in Vietnam, there was going to be what people thought was a big confrontation. It was right after Kent State. And so, here in Portland, there was supposed to be a very large demonstration, but the governor came up with an idea to do a free rock concert down in MacGyver Park, which actually worked very well and drew all the crowds out of the city and left a very few, small contingent of anti-war protesters in the city. So, very interesting story, especially since my family features in it, so I like to tell people about it.
Usually in these activities, I like to bring something that's not work-related, but I have finished my 20th year in education this last year, and I see education, at least for my own mental health, if not anything else, I think it's traditional for it to be a 30-year stint, so I'm, you know, kind of thinking about it in thirds. So, in that sense, I finished two-thirds of my career. And so, I've been in a little bit of a reflective phase in terms of, you know, where I've been during that time. So, what I brought with me today was class pictures of the ones that I've been able to have from when I was a teacher and then also as a principal. So, you can see here, and I'll pass these around. My first year as a teacher, and then you can see various years, but, you know, I think about those students periodically and often, and think about where they've been and have been connected with some of them over the years, and think about the things that I did well and the connections I made, and think about the face-palm moments of, you know, now that I know better about education, what I would have done differently in the classroom. So, just a reflective phase for me and also thinking about how education's changed over that time period, and, you know, this has been nearly half of my life now, so. Appreciate you indulging me. And before I forget, I also wanted to turn it over to John and his colleague. I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but I remember John last year shared his cellphone, and I'm not sure if he has thought about a potential artifact for this year. Missy's going to bring you a mic.
Well, I didn't get the memo. Actually, Noah was supposed to be here today. So, I thought of the few things. I did my cellphone last year, and apparently that was memorable. So, I thought this year I would do something a little more personal, is my wedding ring. And, sorry, it's very touching. Anyway, my wedding ring is very special to me because in the inside, it's engraved my two-week husband's Maui 2022. Because when I went to Maui with my not-then-husband, but now-current husband, we weren't supposed to. I wasn't able to tell my family. They didn't understand those choices in my life. So, it was, it was our, our moment. And so, we got wedding rings while we were there, and I said, you know, we can be husbands for two weeks. And then when we got back, we didn't take the rings off. And so, as things progressed, we eventually did get married, and then it came down to a choice of finding a wedding ring, and I wanted something very unique. And I said, "How about something like a meteorite ring?" And he goes, "Nope, not having that. Done meteorites. They have bad juju, and it did not work well." So, I'm like, "All right, well, scratch that idea." So, I looked high and low and trying to find something that's just, just different. And then I found these rings, which the entire ring itself is compressed black diamond. And so, they're very, very strong. They're very resilient. You can scratch concrete with them, and they don't scratch. And that was my thing with any of the black rings, is they scratch. So, the ring is very special to me, and I'm just, I cherish it very much, and like I said, it makes me a little emotional. So, that's a little bit about me and something that I wanted to share, so thank you. And now I'll turn it over to Brian. He's one of our new techs, and he has something to share.
I also did not get the memo. But, hi, my name is Brian DeMars. So, I suppose in place of bringing something, I brought myself. So, I've been in the district for just about six years, I believe, in September. I'm a newer member here at IT, and I'm going to be here, a new face reoccurring from time to time. I'll be shadowing John here and Noah as well as they come up, so that way I can be on board to make sure everything runs smoothly for you. But, yeah, I've seen a lot of you around here. It's been awesome to see everyone move around as I have, so I'm looking forward to continuing that with you all here.
Thank you. I mean, serious. I wasn't going to have enough time with those, so I'll look at them later. Thank you, everyone, for sharing. I really appreciate the touching stories, the heartfelt things that you share, and courage for those who didn't bring anything to just jump right in and share anyway. I really appreciate that. So, next up, we've got the topic of Board Governance. We've got Closing the Loop. So, there were several items that came up as potential topics for, for us to talk about, and so not all of them made it into the agenda. I kind of wanted to go through some of the things that didn't make it into the agenda and talk about next steps for those. First off, the stipends. I think we all saw, and I hope we all saw the email from Missy. More guidance from OSBA coming next month, so we're going to hold until we get a little more guidance on that. So, just a reminder, if you're going in the role of a board member and not a parent, please check in. We have a board policy that asks that you check in with James before you go to visit the schools. Reviewing Board Book in advance of meeting. So, there's some really important stuff in there that we, that you'll be, that you vote on in the meetings, and so it's really important that you read that stuff ahead of time. If you have trouble getting into your board, there's also a public side which has the same information, or you can reach out to Missy. Let's see here. Student representation. So, that came up, and I think that I would invite folks to do a tiny bit more legwork on this one and engaging, really getting the student voice. So, we've talked about how we can have students more engaged at board meetings, similar to other districts, and with, I want that to, like, I want that as well, but I want it to come from the students. I want the students, so I think that if we, as a board, I mean, we have a couple of student leaders, and I think that you've done a great job of going around Student Council, but I would love to hear from them how they would want to be involved instead of us just being, like, "We want you to be involved." But that's definitely something that we can bring more up. But I, today, I'm recommending getting more student voice before we add that to the agenda. So, those were my, are there any questions on the Closing the Loop? Okay. Just a note of business, please take care of yourself. If you use the bathroom, lunch will be coming at noon. And depending on how far we get through things, we'll either take a break for lunch or keep working through lunch. All right. Next up, 4.2, Board Operations. So, in front of you, there's all sorts of papers. I'm going to ask you to pull up the Board Operating Agreement. We have some new folks. My least favorite thing is going through and reading this out loud to people who are very adept at reading. So, let's take this a chunk, a chunk at a time, and, well, what I would like us to do is let's take a couple of minutes, read through these, and then highlight, this is our way of, sorry, I'm over. This is our way of self-reflection and really checking ourselves. How have we done on this over the past year? Are there things that we haven't done well, that we feel like we could do better? Are there things that are missing? This is kind of our, how we root ourselves in the work. And so, let's take a few minutes to look over these and then highlight one or two things that you'd like to share with the group, or just listen, however you feel. Comfortable. Uh-huh. Please. We'll do the Board Operating first, and then we'll do the Board Operating side. Let's just look at the whole thing. Okay. Is it not time already? All right, let's jump right in. Does anybody have anything that jumps out at them?
In good, bad, or indifferent?
Yes. I welcome the constructive. I welcome the positives.
Overall, no, I think it's pretty solid. And thank you to whoever originally put this together a couple of years back. There are a couple, I've drawn down a couple of notes here. Maybe there were points of clarification or anything. Point five in the first section of roles and responsibilities, does the board will periodically review their own performance? I'm not sure. I experienced that in the last eight months or so. And maybe that's done at some point and I just wasn't here to experience it, right? And then towards the bottoms, probably a note to maybe myself, but number 15, under the last paragraph, the board will employ a variety of means and gain the community. I just wrote myself a note that maybe this is an opportunity to develop one of our working committees around outreach and how we want to meet people where they're at, as Derek Newman mentioned at our last meeting. And whether that's how we strategically engage PTAs, PTOs, other various community groups that are also engaged in the general work of the district and whatnot. So it's more of just a general note out there, besides our communications department doing a lot of heavy lifting, right? So those are my thoughts on that.
Great. And I will respond and say, yes, that number five, it does say we will periodically review our own performance. Instead of putting together a full board self-review performance, this is our actual, like, our time of year to go over kind of what we agree to each other and what we agree to the superintendent. I encourage anyone who is interested in doing some legwork, if you want a more elaborate process, do some legwork, pull it, bring it forward to the board and we can definitely talk about it.
That was one of the ones I was gonna mention. I've brought it up before.
Yeah.
Having sort of a evaluative thing. Talked about it last year. Still like to continue to talk about that. And I guess just personally and more for me, I appreciate the, the communication things laid out because I recognize that I miss more board meetings than the average human at this group of table does. So I just appreciate the, the laid out, like, connecting with each other, talking to each other, responding to emails, using all of the resources in that way so that I can manage both my passions in the way that I am best able. So I appreciate it laid out like that. Thank you.
Two things. One, I do wanna second Director Mauring's call out to point 15. Same thing with board. And I know we spoke about that a little bit at our last meeting. I also, I would be curious as we're, as we're having the conversation here and going forward, twice we took this operating agreement, talks about student needs and student voice. Recognizing that I'm new to the board, I don't know much of how we are knowing student needs and listening to the student voice, but I do want to, I'm curious to continue that conversation and listen.
Great. That will definitely be on the, soon. Director Litten?
I just have some, I thought we could say, well, I really appreciate, like, Director Newman, especially, that student voice is incorporated in almost every procedure that we see. And that's, I appreciate seeing that, where students are, when we say reports, it's, the report includes and when students were asked, right? And when students participated. And so I think that this is something that the board has been, you know, good at. Doesn't mean it can't be better. Doesn't mean it maybe weren't done. But I'm glad that we're, it's been a focus of this work. On number four and responsibilities, one of the things that we talked about is being able to participate at schools and at their celebrations. And we do get input from our high school representatives, because oftentimes I hear it, it does in the board meetings and it tells us about things that are coming up and we know about those. But then we don't always get to know about what might be happening in class day, or faculty. So I think a big way that we can facilitate information that we pretend, you know, cultural nights or things of that nature, if invited, that those of us who might be able to, it's nice to be able to have a board member that you, so like, these are, you know. So that I do, people know they're the board. One. And two, oftentimes, I've not been to see interesting conversations with people about what the board does and, you know, are you interested in, you know, wanting to pursue some of the things that we do. But, you know, people learn something that oftentimes comes up, you know, parents, but just how to be involved at a district level as well as the board, just experiencing one
Anything else from around the room? Comments, thoughts? Let's go ahead and flip it over to the Board Superintendent Operating Agreement. So let's take a few minutes to read through that and again, do the same thing with notes. Anything jumping out for anyone? Comments, thoughts? Superintendent Owens, do you have any thoughts?
I have a lot of thoughts. I always have thoughts. Oh, yeah, about this. I feel like we established these operating agreements four or five years ago now and refined them slightly. But I think we've reviewed them annually and I think it's been a helpful exercise to help clarify expectations of one another. So I guess my comments would be, I just appreciate, from my perspective, that there's adherence to what we've agreed to. And I feel like we're following what's been established here. And as things come up and people have questions, I feel like people appropriately reach out to me and I don't feel surprised. And I feel like, you know, there's, each board member takes the responsibility appropriately and seriously. So I just, I guess my comment is appreciation.
Thank you. Any suggestions for changes to either pages? Please.
Not necessarily changes, but it's just a question for superintendent. Under board expectations of building trust with community.
Start over again. I'm sorry. I apologize. Under board expectations of superintendent, building trust with community and in the district. Does that, do you feel like that covers also the, what, the work that you've been doing with, community is such a broad word, right? Does that cover what you've been doing with City of Gresham and our local legislators and ESDs and things of that nature? If that encompasses it super, or do you, would you like to see that covered, called out a little bit more broadly?
I hadn't thought about that, but I think community, to me, just if you're asking me to answer on the spot, which you kind of are, is, encompasses anyone who is interested in or is relevant to the school district. So I think qualifying it might somehow limit it in a way that we wanna keep it as expansive and inclusive as possible. So I think, to your question, yes, I think it does encompass legislators or City of Gresham or anyone else who has an interest or doesn't know they have an interest and should have an interest in, in what we're doing.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And then lastly, on our superintendent expectations of board, you mentioned that you felt that we've avoided surprising. I think part of that is because you're so good at your Friday communiques, that you give us an opportunity to think through something beforehand. And the board coffees, I think, have been instrumental in that as well. So that's just an appreciation of what you, you brought to help us with that, no surprises, because you give us ample time to think about something that may be actionable at a later time. So that's something I really appreciate, instead of finding out like here.
Well, yeah, and I was gonna mention that too and just didn't or forgot, was I think that we've set up structures for communication with one another that are predictable, but then also adaptive based on, you know, what the need is. And so I would just echo and reinforce that, that my communication is differentiated based on who the director is. I know Director Lynn will send me lists of questions and inquiries and we'll talk offline. And I think that's a great way to do it. And I know we have board leadership and that's a meeting and we have our board coffees that were mentioned as well. And some board members I talk to more often than others. So if you feel like there needs to be enhanced or, or different communication, I would just encourage you to reach out and let me know what you'd like to see.
I would like to just say that I also appreciate the adaptability in changing the board coffees.
Yep.
I don't wanna get a sub to come to a morning board coffee. It just is a huge amount of work. So switching that to be late afternoons and evenings, and I'm hoping that flexibility can continue, everybody has a different job functionality and things. So I think that that is respectful of who is doing the service and who's doing the organizing. And I think that that is a positive aspect of, of our teamwork and collaboration. I'd like, and hope that continues.
Great. Next up is policy review. Boy, oh boy, we got a lot of policies. And a lot of them, it's been a long time since we've reviewed. I'm not sure, was this, were we asking folks here if we wanted to review more this year?
My, my recollection of our discussion as we were planning the agenda was around our current practice of the way that we've been reviewing policies. So we do the first read, second read format, and there's the option to adopt if the first read is sufficient. And then the question of if a policy needs more work, as we've had some, that people have more questions about or would like to take more of an active leadership role as a district board in terms of the shaping of that policy, if we wanna stay with the status quo of having ad hoc committees of those who are interested in working more deeply on that policy, or if we want to have a more formalized process of establishing a policy committee that reviews policies, you know, as a matter of course, and maybe looks at more all of them and has a standing meeting. So I think that that, that was my recollection of the discussion.
That's helpful. So yeah, just kind of opening it up to folks to see thoughts on, you know. So as James has said, typically, we do first read, second read. If something does require, we've asked folks who are passionate about that area to kind of come in and spend a little time working on those policies outside of the meetings to come and bring back to us. I think knowing that we have a lot of policies, it was, we were curious kind of the board's thoughts on, do we want to have a standing policy committee where we can start to really work through some of those ones that don't even have, you know, they don't necessarily have stuff that needs to be updated, but it's good for us to, to keep on top of them. So I would love to hear thoughts one way or the other. Director Harden?
I like the first read, second read, way to go about it. We've been all over the, no pun, but we've been all over the board in how we've handled these things. Some of them, we have, it's been the first read. I thought it would, there would be questions and debate and, and no one had anything. We passed it through. There's been other times when it's like, oh, some flags were raised and some questions brought up. So we brought it back to a second read. Or like, everybody do your homework, come back, ask your questions, get them answered, and then we'll come back the second time and see if we're ready to vote on it. So, and knowing, I don't see a policy committee, I worry that there would be a policy that was reviewed by that committee that they didn't view as, that they passed through because they, you know, not inconsequential, but a minimal effect, that one of the other board members that's not on the committee would have that feeling about. So I think that's why I'm against a policy committee. I do like the first read, second read kind of thing. And because then if we do have concerns, they can be raised at the table. And sometimes just the questions back and forth raises more awareness about it. So I'd like to continue with that.
Director Mauring, and then?
I echo Director Harden's comments on that. I think the current process works without kind of muddying the water a little bit. I'm all for studying topics more in depth when it requires it. But I also appreciate efficiencies in government particularly. And so far, the, the established structure, I think, has worked. When there have been questions, we talk amongst ourselves offline or we reach out to the superintendent to get more information on stuff. So I think that what we have is working. I'm not opposed to creating some sort of working group, if that's how the group, the majority group feels. But I think that it's working as needed.
I also think it's working and it, as unfun as sometimes reading pages and pages of policy is, it's our primary function. And I think what is very powerful are the multiple perspectives that sit around the table. So I think a, a policy committee would remove a lens that I think we would wanna keep. So I, I like the ability to adopt after the first read and then have a discussion. Whereas I might spot something that is very school focused. Somebody else might spot something that is law focused or equity focused or community focused. And I just think that's powerful.
Director Newman?
Basically, I don't have anything different from everyone else. My, my experience on charter school boards and policy adoption is very much, everyone has their blind spots and everyone has their things about which they're passionate. And I can read something and totally miss something. Someone else might say, oh,
I would like to disagree just a tiny bit with this side of the table, only in this one's way. We've had a couple of times where things have been so changed, and we've had a policy come to us that's been so jumbled, it was kind of like, oh, could we just have a few people clean it up a little bit before the whole board sees it? And I'll tell you where my concern is, and I mentioned this at our last meeting, and it's our field trip travel policy. And the thing that is daunting about it is that it involves administrative regulations that touch on every school as well. And I was, I volunteered to try to look at it, and then I realized just how big of a task it was. And so we have had working groups, as Director Maureen had mentioned, and I thought that that, if we could have like a working group on some things that are just big. And I don't know, we would bring them to the board to find out if it was big enough for that type of, let's have three people, that had been the way it did work before, like three board members just sit down together and try to get something going with it and then bring it, and it would go, it went back and forth for a while. And I think we also might have a couple of board members, depending on what we start hearing about the cell phone situation, do we all want to do it together at all different layers as we understand it's going to be moving through a process that the district has already started? Or do we want to have a few board members, you know, sit and reflect and then bring it to the whole? Nothing goes, not, everything comes to the whole, everything comes to the body.
What I'm hearing is it's more of like an exception as needed as the rule. So we don't necessarily need a policy committee, but we would like the opportunity and the option to say, this needs further nitty gritty work, could we, in this instance, have a subcommittee look at it, but not a regular practice.
Yeah.
I could get behind that sort of structure. I just think we would get bogged down if we did it wholly the other way.
Yep.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that that's what gets determined in the first read.
Right.
Like, it comes to the whole, the first read, and then we decide, like, see who's passionate, see what questions come up, see what issues arise, and if we see in that first read, there's a lot to this and a lot, and certain people are certain, passionate about it, then maybe we can break off a committee. But like you said, as needed, I don't think that that is the general policy or general motion.
Great. I feel like we are sort of in an agreement there.
I was just going to offer, we have our cabinet members here as well, as well as another board member in another district as well, so I don't know if there are any ideas from the folks who are developing policies and bringing them forward, if there's anything that you want to comment on or see, not to put you on the spot, but since you're here, wanted to make sure you had the opportunity.
Board member attendance. So this was a request from the board. You'll see kind of the board meeting attendance. One of the things that we talk about in our operating agreements is attendance at meetings. And so I don't know if folks want to talk about this or not, but I wanted to, we wanted to share this information and allow for a conversation if anyone would like.
I appreciate that we have this ability to look at it, because it does say in our operating agreements that our attendance is expected. And obviously, as elected officials, the people who vote us in really get to set those expectations for us, but I think it's important that we do have the opportunity to just reflect in on our own attendance and what that means and how we accomplish things as a group. And just want to congratulate everybody on having generally great attendance.
Take my name off them.
There's things that always come up in life.
Yeah.
Right, and you heard my sharing this morning, but I have my hand in like six different things and it's insane. And everybody has, you know, everybody has multiple things going on. But overall, and I think it speaks to the cohesiveness of our group as well and working together and getting things done.
If I may, Vanessa, can you explain to us how you, you have to report attendance on us for some purposes? Is that a, is that a correct memory?
Yes, so I do take attendance at all board meetings, of course, and we have to report those hours that you are here in the district to our workers' comp carriers. So it is for board meetings, I also go ahead and record if graduation, district-wide events that you folks attend. The data there you see is just for board meetings only. It does not include board leadership meetings, it does not include district events, because those aren't mandatory necessarily. And so we really wanted to just pinpoint on board meetings in particular. But yes, we do have to report those hours to our workers' comp carriers that you guys, when you're in the district.
If I, Lord, attend an activity at the school, like an after-school activity, should I be reporting that to you for that purpose? How broad does it need to go?
Yeah, it would be helpful if you would, but I understand that that's not always feasible to do that, especially with the various events that are taking place in the district. So if you can, it's great, and I can record it, but the reality of it is, is I don't think we can always be able to capture all of those events that you guys attend. I try to capture them the best that I can, but I don't always know when you guys are out in buildings and at district-wide events. So I do the best I can.
Our last item under board operations is political involvement. I wanted to pull up one of our policies. Can you remind me which policy? Does it?
It's BI.
So there was also comments, and we had a conversation about involvement, board involvement in legislature and kind of, I was doing a little bit of background research to help understand, because like legislative area is not my area of expertise. And so one thing that was pretty interesting, this policy, BI, a board legislative program, the board will represent the district's interests in legislative action to promote the welfare of the public education in the state of Oregon, or will direct those interests to be represented through its executive officer. The board will study, discuss, and weigh the merits of ending pending legislation and referendums for the purpose of determining its official position through board action. If established, these official positions will be the stand of the district in the legislative process. Board members individually or as members of professional organizations will not seek to represent any other positions on legislative matters unless it's made clear that such representation is not the official stand of the district, which is a bit confusing. You know, some of these policy words. I think that for, you know, really wanting to know how active to be and where our role is in this, we hire the superintendent and we have, the school district pays for some legislative work. I would love to have a conversation and understand more if folks have thoughts on furthering that or being more involved, or, yeah, I just, like, the topic came up and I wanted to definitely, you know, open it up to folks. I don't know if you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I can add is, I would ultimately want to know a little bit more of the board's interest in this topic to be able to address what you might want to hear, but I'll, in lieu of that, I'll share kind of our current structure is, as was mentioned by incoming Chair Vice Chair Shields earlier, there's a lot of engagement that I do by virtue of my role with various municipalities, whether it be legislators at the state level, mayors of respective cities have been met with this last year, council members for the county or for the city and so forth. And for that function, I work as the officer of the district, as the hired help to do that as an administrator. I'm not a politician, however, but part of my role is to talk with the politicians around us to help shape the conversation as it pertains to the benefit of Centennial and public education as a whole. We also have at, through the ESD, not at the ESD, through the ESD, and I'll just clarify that distinction in a minute, a legislative administrator who interfaces on the East County School District's behalf, not Portland Public, because they have their own in-house, but for East County School Districts, as a group, developing a legislative platform in the legislative session, reviewing that with the school board so that the school board is understanding and comfortable with what that platform is, and then using that platform as, you know, a group of 80,000 students that we represent in East County to help shape legislation as well and drive the legislative session. Again, that's done administratively through the Government Affairs Administrator that's through the ESD but works for the school districts, not for the ESD. And that is done administratively and not through the board. So, you know, I guess part of the question is, does the board want to take more of an active role, or how do you want to see that shaped in your relationship with the superintendent and the structure of the district in terms of how interfacing with various governmental agencies and politicians, how you want to see, that's the current structure. It works effectively enough, but I also understand that board members may want to take a more active role in that venue. So that's my understanding of the issue. I could have it wrong, but that's what I have to share right now.
So at this point, I'd love to open it up to hear from anybody that, or if you feel like this is a topic that you want to address individually with the superintendent, I'm fine moving on to, but does anyone have anything for the, please?
One thing I would say is, I want to be supportive of James, I want to be supportive of the community, I want to be supportive of the Centennial School District. And if my involvement in those areas will be beneficial for the community and for our district, then I'm all for it. I need to know that, though, like, or not need to know that, but I need to know when those situations are where you're like, I need your help, Jess.
Yeah.
Can you guys come with me? You know, Maxine Dexter's coming to the high school, I need four board members, who's coming?
Yeah.
You know, those kinds of situations, a little more assertiveness in letting us know where you need us to support you and support the district, because I think we're all about it.
Yeah.
We all want the best for Centennial and for our community, and that's why we're here. So that's, I would appreciate that personally.
Yeah, I would absolutely second that. When we see invitations come through that are optional, to me that means optional, but it would definitely mean a lot more if you're like, I really need somebody here.
Yep.
And I think this topic was also raised just in general of being more engaged in advocacy.
Yeah.
And some of our neighboring school districts have been a little more outspoken in issuing statements and proclamations with current events that have taken place.
Yeah.
Since the new presidential administration has been sworn in. And that, I think, if I'm recalling correctly, and I'll make sure, I want everybody to correct me if I'm wrong, and I also would like to hear Director Lynn's thoughts on this, and I know that he's highly engaged in these matters, and whether or not we wanted to take a more active role as a board in some of those things. I think there's merits to wading into those waters, there's also merits in perhaps being focused on what we can control in our own district as well. But that might be something that we build out of the, and I'm putting this out there, I want to establish that outreach committee. Maybe that's something we build into that programming is, if we're going to make additional statements that reflect on current events that are happening much more broadly and that are obviously impacting us locally but happening on a broader scale, what is the process for doing that and making sure that we're accurately capturing everyone's voice in that, and we're not just taking it upon ourselves to say, well, because we said so, so to speak. But again, I'd love to hear Director Lynn's thoughts, I know he's, again, highly engaged in these matters of advocacy on all levels. And previously, you know, you had some comments too, and we've had some offline dialogue too about engaging in what other districts are doing. So I'd love to learn more about what other districts are doing and how they're handling that as well.
Okay, moving right along, this is the section where we're going to, board report structure, agenda items. This is where we're going to talk about school involvement, hearing from schools, hearing from kiddos, student recognition. We've done it a couple of different ways in my time here. Two years ago, we had every school present at a board meeting. We've had, last year we asked, instead of it, to be each individual school, but more student recognition-based, which I think got ruled out at the high school, but didn't trickle down to the elementary or middle schools, because we didn't get a lot of student recognition at that level. I think there's a lot of different ways we could incorporate this. And ultimately, you know, it's going to be up to, you know, board leadership to make decisions going forward on the agenda, but I wanted to open it up to see if other folks had other thoughts, ideas, ways we could incorporate schools and youth more in our board meetings.
I just wanted to offer also, I was asked to prepare something, I did not get it together in advance for a read ahead, but it's available here now. So in your stack of various papers, there's, I think, a couple with the Centennial logo and the Roadmap 27 logo, but it's one of those. And it's a one-pager, but it's really a two-pager, because it's back-to-back, and it captures the background as was relayed by Chair Solowski in terms of where we've been with school reports. And I see the discussion on the agenda here, 5.1 and 5.2, being kind of coupled, because I think this year we did student recognition kind of in lieu of doing board reports. And so to me, it's not one or the other, but it's how you want to handle both of those topics together. As it pertains to the two-pager that you have here, the way that this is structured, and I would offer, you know, as a part of the discussion, or maybe even before the discussion, to kind of depending on how you want to do it, Chair Solowski, it has some background, it has some guiding questions for board consideration in terms of, you know, what is the purpose here, what are we trying to accomplish? And on the backside, it has five options. I think the options in general are endless, but it gives you five kind of tee-off points for ways to consider this, and we can shape it however we'd like. It doesn't have to be one of these, it could be a hybrid, or it could be none of these and something else. And then just some implementation notes. So Chair Solowski, I'll turn it back to you, but I just wanted to offer that this resource was available for supporting the conversation.
I think one of the, I think one of the things that I hear quite a bit is, could we do board meetings at individual schools? And I think that where we've come up against that is a little bit about more of the IT infrastructure that's needed nowadays to stream the meetings. I'm not saying that's an end-all, be-all, because I know that they've made it work. I'm not saying that's an end-all, be-all, because I know that they've made it work, you know, back when we could do it off-site. So, I think that that's an interesting question. I'm curious people's thoughts on the matter.
Yeah, if we can, if we can do it, I know we have rules and regulations on how we do those. I don't know if, I don't know if it would be, I'd love to hear more thoughts on how we can, from a logistical perspective, do that. For me, that's a district question, or John, or Paul?
Rules and policies, it's possible other districts do it off-site. That I don't think is our stumbling block. I think it's technology, and that's totally a good conversation. I would like to just discuss number five, student voice panels. It's on that little sheet. Can you guys call that? I'm going to make a little plug for that just because that would be our primary focus in getting more students here. Many of the elementary schools have leadership programs and things that the upper elementary kids are doing, and that would give them an opportunity to experience what some of that is like. I would like to combine that student voice panel with the five and five. So, it's student voices from five schools one year and student voices from five schools another. So, we have that rotation going, like looking for some morphing of some of these. But it could very well be a way to get more kids actually talking about what's happening to them, by them, instead of somebody for them.
Yeah, so I'm looking, I'm just looking over the things here, and I think, I look at number three. I do really love student voice panels. And also looking at number three, students as teachers really as an empowerment moment to the students. If they can come to us and teach us what they're doing, I think that's a really lovely idea. Not on this, but something that I just want to throw out, and if this is a later conversation, that's okay. I've been, I'm kind of inspired by some of the town halls that have been happening from our legislators. Can we do something similar? This would not be the entire board going to, say, a parent-teacher association meeting. But two, probably not even three, because I want to be aware of not being an imposing presence, but really just, can we, taking questions, hearing the community talk about, what does our school need? And to be able to bring that information back here when we're talking about policies and making decisions.
Thank you. I will not, I think that that is a fabulous idea. And it can get a little sticky with doing board work not in a board meeting. So, it'd be really important, one, that we don't have quorum, and two, that the individual peoples wouldn't promise things out at that point. But I do think that's a great way to hear from folks. Director Shields?
I've been at this for a while, and I was here on the board when we did full board, or school reports at each regularly scheduled board meeting. And some of us also will remember that we were hitting up against the 10:00 PM timeframe. And I think, Director Murray, when you were mentioning what kind of, you know, what it would be, right? We have to recognize that when we do that at a board meeting, then that shortens the amount of time that we're doing our own business. Now, we also, though, have work sessions which have more flexibility because we don't usually take a lot of actions during that time. And then the other, whether we, you know, any of these are good. Like, there's something about every single one of them that's positive and we'd like to engage in. And that would be, is the board willing to come together at different times other than the scheduled board meetings for the purpose of the town hall type of approach? As long as we could get it on a calendar. And this is where a challenge, I think, we have to recognize. Every school already has their calendars pretty much set for what they're going to be doing next year. And so, we would want to take into consideration what their schedules are. And the five, I think, Director Stanley, you had mentioned five, you know, five and five. So, that if, whatever we decide, that we're really giving individual schools enough time either to come to us or us to them, because it's a big deal. And it's a lot of time that they spend. And so, the questions that, that we have, the guiding questions for our consideration on the front side of this, I think we need to spend some time on that. It's not a feel-good, I mean, it's a feel-good moment too, but there should be something, a purpose for it. But within the limitations of, don't make promises. Board members show up and they, they can be seen as, "You're here so you're advocating for my idea," right? Or, "You're advocating for my position." And it's tough because there's so many needs. And we have had presentations, if you will, devolved to individual requests. And that's tough because it's the Budget Committee's responsibility to review all things in the totality, rather than just that school's asking for that or that student group is asking for that. So, just be mindful, and I think we really have to be careful, and think through these guiding questions as we look at each of these proposals and give adequate time for the schools to be able to respond. And the technology, I have no idea what it would take to put a board meeting on at Park Lane, Pleasant Valley, et cetera. And so, before we even go into that discussion, thinking that's a great idea, I'd love to hear the impact on our IT department in something like that. Because we might think it's great, and then when we find out the reality through Director Southernton and his team, that this is, this takes hours and hours of time, which means it takes hours and hours away from our classrooms and other functions. Maybe that isn't in the best interest of having it at the school, even though it feels good. But having a pre-meeting at a school, having us, you know, show up at 4:30, 5 o'clock, and then come on over here for a board meeting? You know, that's something different. Because we, as a board, can go out and visit. We're not a quorum because we're not doing business, right? We're just there to visit with it. But I want to hear and the time and the economic impact it would have for us to take the whole team as a board meeting to any of these outlying areas. So, I'm sort of looking at Director Southernton if I may.
Yeah, I'm happy to give a quick answer on the spot and then more detailed research as needed. So, to meet the statutory requirements, we can do that at any site via virtual meeting because the statutory requirement is that you need to have the same public commenting and the same streaming ability as you do for a virtual meeting. So, we, or you all, as a board, meet, you know, work sessions virtually typically, right? And we do that via Zoom. So, it would be the same as a Zoom meeting if we were in another school. That would be the minimum, right? If you would like more than that as a board, for example, if you would like multiple stationary cameras set up, if you would like to have, you know, opportunities for voice amplification or other PA and speaker systems, then that becomes more of a production that we would need to look into and work with the IT department. But as far as meeting minimum statutory requirements, being in compliance with those, I believe we could achieve that the same as if we were all meeting, or you all were meeting virtual, right? Everybody would bring their laptop and have their cameras on and microphones alternating and things like that. So, I don't believe there's a statutory or regulatory reason that would prohibit it. It would just mean, is the board satisfied with that level of production for a meeting? Or would you like something more similar to what we have here? Which then would require lots of notice and maybe the purchase of some additional technology to be able to stream, effectively stream with a mobile camera and microphone system versus the fixed camera microphone system that we have now. Is that helpful or answer questions?
Do they have any feedback that they would like to give additional on any of the options?
What do the schools want? Do the schools feel like they're not connected to the board or that they don't have a way of communicating to the board? Would the schools appreciate us to be at their buildings more often? Would they appreciate, you know, do they want to do the reports? You know, does anyone have any insight into what the schools want?
I'm going to defer first to Dr. Katsuda to see if she has any thoughts here. I can respond to that, but I just want to give you the first opportunity.
Communication for many of the schools that they request with the board to be there? Nothing explicit?
Yeah, how I would respond is, I think that it depends on the administrator and the time of year and when it's brought to them and kind of all of that. But it's not about the adults, so let's just kind of focus on the students first. I think it's good to feature the work of the school so that the board is hearing more than just from the superintendent in terms of how things are going. And so, I think that there's a benefit. I think that sometimes the presentations become carbon copied to the point where you're hearing a lot of the same. And it doesn't kind of allow for the customization of what's happening at the school. And so, I think that's part of how we set the parameters for that. If you talk to administrators, I think it's kind of across the board in terms of, "Gosh, I don't like public speaking in front of adults, and this is an extra ask," and, you know, all of this. And so, I think sometimes there's a, like when they heard last year that we weren't going to have to do it, there was kind of a collective sigh, "Ah, one less thing that we have to do." And, you know, it's not just about tasks and responsibilities, but about the functioning of the school district and what information helps inform the board to make good decisions. So, there's that aspect of it. I think, you know, again, I hesitate to speak for others, but I think that as a district, we've been really trying to incorporate more student voice. And so, I think the stand and deliver from the principal has had its time. And I think that our evolution may be into allowing more opportunities for students to be able to speak to their experience and potentially, as some of these options suggest here, be able to not only share their experience, but then connect it to the strategic plan in terms of immersing the board in some things that they're working on at the school that are connected to the priority areas. So, the ability to synergize that way. And then finally, in terms of having school board meetings in schools, I think, you know, there's, they're tend to be, hey, it would be great to have the school board in our school, which is a good notion, and I think it's worth further discussion and consideration. Then the question becomes, who actually is showing up to those meetings at 6:30 at night? And is, just because we're having it in the school, and that's great, are additional people, community, students, families showing up by virtue of the fact that it's happening in the school? We've had board meetings in schools before, and it's been the board sitting in the room at the school, but there's nobody from the school, community, that's going to it. So, I think it may be a feel-good thing to do that, but then I think it goes back to the guiding questions about what we're trying to accomplish, which then could feed into what sort of promotion and outreach that we're doing in combination with the board being at the school, if that makes sense. I don't know, hopefully that helps.
A point on having been, having done board meetings at schools and nobody showing up.
I also think it sometimes feels like other duties as assigned. And when you're in this school field, that's a common phrase, right? And if it is something that we could be more, be as much forethought as we could provide and guidance we could provide about what we're seeing coming from that. And calendar, if what, I just, I know I appreciate knowing way ahead of time when my dean is showing up, right? And we're like the principals or the deans showing up in the schools. So, I just really like, whatever we choose, to be, build a calendar after we make some decisions, build a calendar towards that, and maybe give it a year to of implementation and then evaluation of what we thought was really good ideas. And within that structure, consider that our work sessions, which we have had as Zoom meetings, which I have appreciated, so don't get me wrong. You know, it's nice not to come to the building twice a month, but it may also ask for us to come to the building for some of the work sessions, to be here physically present when we ask schools or students to be physically present.
I guess just the last thing I want to say is, when I look at all the questions, the big things I circled were main purpose, what role should students have, and go beyond traditional. And then the only last thing I want to say is, I don't want to spend any extra money on this. So, if it takes buying more equipment to go and do it, I don't want to support that in a deficit situation, so.
All right. Anything else shared to take into consideration?
Thanks, and I appreciate the parameters with which to develop it. It helped.
All right. I am going to go ahead and turn it over to Superintendent Owens for the Roadmap 27 update.
Did we get what we needed on the student recognition portion? Were we liking that format, and do we want to continue it? I don't mean to back us back.
My thought was that we would give a bunch of input here, and then board leadership could make some tactical decisions.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
But if you, if other people have...
If we have structural proposals or ideas, we could just send them off so we don't have to keep, okay, great. Those are a lot of incomplete sentences, but thank you for understanding.
I got you.
This is a, as far as the Roadmap 27, this is a point of personal need. I need to hit the restroom for a minute.
Let's take a five-minute.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
Contract negotiations with our licensed bargaining group. And so that is detailed in terms of completing that process. I'll take a breath. And then I'll go back through each goal, just kind of one by one and give you a little bit more. So, back to the first page for roadmap 27, strategic plan implementation. In a nutshell, what you'll see here is a lot of staying the course and intensifying in particular areas. So, the goal isn't very much different from how it was established this past year. It outlines in the initial part of the goal, kind of what the structure is as an orientation to the strategic plan. If you're interested in more detail about the strategic plan, I believe each of you have been provided a hard copy at some point. I have additional here. And then also, we have it available online, so just let me know if you'd like a hard copy. As far as what the actual goal encompasses, we have worked as a district in our administrative team. And this will be part of the next presentation, which you see reflected here on the screen that we're not quite ready for. So, if that's projected, let's take it down for now, so that the audience can see the board meeting in progress. What you'll see reflected is us continuing the strategies that were established this year in terms of focus on literacy, focusing on SEL components of belonging, focusing on engagement and attendance. So, we're intending to continue with what we've established because I don't think we've gained the necessary traction in those key and important areas. What you'll also see is a transition from doing the work around structuring the profile of a graduate to actually implementing what's been developed, and that'll be part of the next presentation as well. I'll pause there because I could talk all day on any of this stuff, but I also try to be concise where I can. For goal two, long-range facility planning, I'll say a couple of things at the outset. Director Sutherland and I met with DLR Group yesterday, Karen Montovino and her associate, Robert Esau. And we met with him yesterday to talk about the broad outline of our engagement together. That contract is for the board's consideration today. I've provided an update at the previous board meeting, I believe, in terms, or a board email, I'm not sure, of our intended engagement with DLR. And this goal basically encompasses that cooperative effort that we're intending to pursue. Going a little bit deeper, in 2028, there is a planned step-down of our bond rate. And a previous board had established that as part of an intentional strategy of demonstrating the work that the district was able to do with the initial 2020 bond. And then considering whether a continuation bond would be appropriate eight years after the passing of that bond. And so backing that calendar up, even though we're in 2025, you need some lead time with all of that process. So, that's what's intended here, is to develop a long-range facility plan. We did one seven or eight years ago in preparation for the 2020 bond. Those, that work that was done at that time was fresh as of that point. And as you know, there's been a lot of work that's happened since then. Either the construction work that's happened by virtue of the bond, and so our needs are different based on what's been done with that. And then we've also been behind the walls of our facilities and know a little bit more about their needs based on the work that's been done as well. And so, this will involve a community-engaged process that we'll detail out further. Our intention, and I'll talk with board leadership about this, is to have a deeper dive with DLR at the September work session to talk about what the year-long plan is for that, so I'm not going to do that now. And basically, that's the over, what you'll see here is a really broad brush on the action plan in terms of what that engagement would be. Not necessarily committing to specifics in this action plan at this point, knowing that that is still left to be determined through our collaboration with DLR, but encompasses the main points of what should happen within that process. Hopefully, that's clear. I'll pause again for a moment, knowing that I'm sure Chair Silawski will ask for questions at the end of all three. The third goal is outlined as licensed contract negotiations. We spent time bargaining with the Centennial Education Association this past year. That contract was not established because there's more bargaining and topics left to consider. And so, the action plan that you see reflected here indicates the work that still needs to be done to accomplish that process. And then my role within that, as somebody that's not at the table, but is also providing strategic guidance with the team outside of the table. So, that's the third goal. Again, as I said at the outset, this isn't intended for you to digest on the spot. I'll follow up via email as far as these goals are concerned, so that you have more time to sit with it. But as I outlined at the initial, are these the right goals to start with? And are there any initial impressions that you have as we talk through it or you saw it?
Note of, just, just a simple note, I did accidentally switch up items six and seven. So, we went to the superintendent's work plan first versus roadmap 27, in case anybody else was confused.
Oh, that was me then. That was me. Okay, sorry.
Questions, thoughts? I think that, please.
I think that there are immediate things to work on and long-term things and longevity things there. They seem like good goals. It's not just focused on the next current year, but the longevity past, coming up with the bond. I think that shows foresight, and I think they look like they'll be, one of them real, real hard, and one of them essential, and two of them long-term planned, so that's good.
And knowing what the chair just said, we may have other thoughts after the next presentation, especially as it pertains to the first goal.
I think that, my question, I will, I'll say, ask it now, but then we'll look kind of forward to probably hearing a little bit more about it in the next portion. But when do we start? We talk, we have, you know, it's 27. When do we start talking about rolling forward strategic plans? Do we, are we looking at wanting to incorporate a whole nother strategic plan process at the same time we're doing long-range facility planning? I think that there's some, just some thoughts that need to go in there. But I'd be interested to hear more as we talk about the strategic plan and thoughts on going forward there.
Would you like me to respond to that?
Is it part of your presentation for later?
No.
Then please yourself.
I love that question, because I've been thinking about that as well. So, these strategic plans, when they're established, Destination 2023 was a five-year plan, and that went like that. And then COVID was a part of that. And now we've got roadmap 27, and it always seems a far way away, and then it is here before you know it. And so, we're in year three of a four-year plan. Next year is going to be year four, and then after year four, then the roadway runs out, and where are we going? So, you have to kind of onboard, on-ramp, to use metaphors related to it. You have to on-ramp your next moves while you're doing your current moves, and that's just kind of part of the work organizationally. So, that being said, before we sunset our agreement with Lauren, and as you know, Lauren took a job with a school district, so she's not available to us in the ways that she was before. But I asked her that question. I said, what do you suggest that we do going forward? Ultimately, and this isn't her comment, but I'll insert her comment in a moment, it's the board's prerogative as to what you want to see going forward. Some districts don't have strategic plans, and I kind of wonder how that works for them. But some districts don't, and they operate a little bit differently. Roadmap, or Destination 2023, I believe, was the first formal strategic plan that the district had in its history. And ODE is requiring strategic plans as a part of aligning for student success, so there's enhanced requirements in terms of having more direct strategy. So, that's that. Then, as it pertains to how light or heavy of a touch to take going forward, that's the board's prerogative based on what's been developed. With Destination 2023, I think the fork in the road was, we didn't get as much traction as we would have liked because COVID consumed a big portion of that time period. So, then is it a matter of rolling forward what hadn't been done or thinking anew? And the board's prerogative at that time, and I would credit Director Andrews for some of that direction as well, was we need more of an overhaul and a rethinking of where we stand now that COVID has taken place and the landscape of education is different. And so, that's where we went and did an in-depth process that encompassed an equity audit and so forth. And so, we took a deeper dive than, you know, I've seen minus Destination 2023, but that was a deeper process. When I asked Lauren about this, going back to that point, you know, this plan that we have established here is, as I just mentioned, it came by virtue of a deeply engaged process and an equity audit. The plan itself neatly is 27 pages, and so it has a lot. And as I talked about, we talked about focusing for another year on four specific areas. There's a lot more in here. So, you know, if I was to answer the question, and you said, give me an answer in 10 seconds, it would be that, and this is what Lauren shared as well, that we would do a lighter touch in strategic planning, knowing there's a lot of ground that didn't get covered in here, and also modulate engagement to reflect that, but then also due diligence in that process, but not do as heavy as a lift as we did before, so that we're not consuming year four with strategic planning, long-range facility planning, pre-bond planning, and doing this at the same time. That may, I think we've done a lot of establishing in the work that we've done already, and it may be a lighter touch going forward. That was a long way of saying, it may be a lighter touch going forward.
That's very helpful. Fully answered my question. Thank you. Other questions?
On pages five, six, and seven, those are the ones that we have pulled from the evaluation process that OSBA had created for evaluation. And sometimes they, some of them feel, when I'm doing them or going through them, I feel like they're not quite as aligned with what we are doing. So, I would ask board members to, you know, this has been boilerplate for a number of years, and so we may need the boilerplate to be reviewed based on what and how we operate. So, that's my concern.
I have a couple of comments on that, which are, number one, a couple of years ago, when we were revamping the process, we looked at the previous rubric that we had used as a district, and I don't know the genesis of that rubric, but it wasn't the one that OSBA is currently advising. So, the one that is here is OSBA's cooperative effort with COSA to develop this rubric, and that's where we landed a couple of years ago when we were looking for the rubric. The second piece, I'll say, is that I got an email within the last month indicating that there will be a revamped rubric that is expected from the state going forward for administrators at least. I don't know how that pertains to superintendents, but there will be a revamped administrative rubric. So, we might want to look on the horizon to see how that might have implications, because a lot of what you see in the rubric that's here echoes the administrative standards in general.
All right. Now, let's jump back to roadmap 27.
So, were people, I mean, couldn't hear from everybody. Are we?
Does anybody have anything else to add?
I'll send this out via email at the end of the week. I intend to send some of the documents here for further digesting, for lack of a better term. And then I'll establish a timeframe within that as to when I'd like to have some feedback, so that I can have a final draft to coincide the start of the school year, so that we can be working the plan that was established as the year begins. But like I said, I'll follow up via email, and we can go from there. All right. Thank you. And so, some of this work plan would make more sense if you knew a little bit about where we're intending to go for the year. I kind of gave it to you in a nutshell, and I apologize for the, for the inflation of the agenda. But nevertheless, we have roadmap 27 update. Dr. Katsuda has done some work with our administrative team and then showed me what we were intending to share today. So, in lieu of saying what she's probably already going to say, I'll just go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Katsuda to go ahead and lead us through where we see ourselves going this upcoming year, and then I'll ad lib as appropriate.
Yes, please. This is a little bit more than a 20-minute presentation. I noted that you said 20 minutes before, so I, we may chunk it up if we need to.
Yeah, I think lunch is going to come at some point, and we can determine if it makes sense.
At some point, I might say this is a good moment to pause, because there are some data, there is some data for you to look at in conjunction with this presentation as well. So, you should have two documents. There are the two documents that are hyperlinked in the slide deck that I'm going to be using to present. You will also get, like, this slide deck will also be uploaded to Board Book after the movement here for your access as well. All right. So, it's my pleasure to review roadmap 27, provide the end-of-the-year board report review, providing information on the priorities and focus for our strategic plan. All right. Looking back to plan forward. So, as with all of our improvement efforts, our planning is grounded in a clear understanding of our local context, informed by feedback from students and families and staff, and driven by analysis of multiple sources of disaggregated data, both quantitative and qualitative. And I believe you've experienced that as we've shared out information with you at every trimester board report as to some of the work we're engaged in across the district and many various kinds of groups as we go through this process. So, over the last three years of implementation, educators across the district have engaged in ongoing improvement cycles at the classroom level, school and district levels. This includes work within professional learning teams, among school and district administrators, and through our trimester data summits. Data analysis remains central to our strategic planning and improvement process. It provides critical insight into students' experiences and outcomes, allowing us to design and refine systems that support differentiated practices to support increased and responsive equitable instruction for all students, right? So, it's important to ground ourselves in that, because that is the driver to all of our improvement efforts.
And I just wanted to note, since the last time I saw this slide, you added a sports car at the top. That was a nice additional touch.
Lauren and I have this ongoing joke. She includes a lot of icons and various symbols in her presentation. So, I have some of those later on. I was wondering if someone would see that sports car. So, here you'll see just an overview. You also have it in the data set, if you'd like to see a more colorful version. The goals are highlighted at the top of each section, goal one, goal two, through goal four, right? Or, and, through goal five. I'm just highlighting, grounding us in the goals, because it can get lost in the midst of the data. We have, to some degree, consolidated one and four, because the concepts there are similar. Building strong foundation, pre-K3, post-12, and ensuring equitable access to high-quality academics, right? And in that, we look at and review ongoing measures in English, language arts, and math. We particularly focus on those. I should say, we look at all of our outcome measures, but in terms of very strategically monitoring the impact of our work related to goals one and four, we look at ELA and math. STAR and state assessment. The report we're going to look at today shows the state assessment, which is an annual assessment, not the STAR data, which we have shared with you in the trimester board reports. You've got those at that moment. And then goal two is supporting every student's well-being and inclusion. We look at a variety of student questions, survey questions, and juxtapose that with attendance rates at a disaggregated, in a disaggregated way. Goal three is centering student voice empowerment and leadership, again, pulling from numerous student survey questions and analyzing that in a disaggregated fashion across all students who are surveyed in our district's grade three through 12, right? And preparing every student for their future. For that, we had identified ninth grade on track, which means that students should have six credits by the end of their ninth grade year, which is proportionately setting up the amount of credits they need to have in order to graduate. And we look at four-year graduation rates and fifth-year completion rates. We don't have the final data for that from ODE. We won't get that until November. So, the data you're looking at here is not fully updated just yet. It's sort of preliminary, right? And then in the future, for goal five, it is our intention to include more qualitative measures that are closer to student learning, and a lot of that will be connected to student presentations and products of their learning through profile the graduate's efforts in improving our practice. So, that just gives you a high-level overview. I am going to orient you to the data that you have in front of you, which I believe all of you already have in front of you. Again, four- and five-year graduation rates will not be updated until November, but I wanted to give you a couple of moments to look at the data and then provide some high-level summary statements. So, if you're like me, I like to read the data and not have people talking while I'm trying to absorb numbers and such. So, I'll give you a couple of minutes, and then I'll check to see if we're ready, and we'll talk about the data. Seeing no hands. So, as you see here in the data in front of you for goal number one, we see in ELA grade three, we have increased in our achievement there, achievement ratings there, as well as grade three math. ELA from 26% to 33%, math from 26% to 32%. So, that is, I would say, considered significant growth. Anything over at least 3% with the numbers of students we have at that grade level would be considered growth. Anything in my sort of statistical analysis that ranging within a 2% range generally is considered sort of flatlining. And given the mobility in the district, it's really hard to measure that. So, a lot of our percentages you'll see are really close in terms of growth or decline. And generally speaking, that's just saying that we're kind of maintaining achievement at the same level, right? So, for the second goal, elementary grades three through five, you'll see there, the survey responses show that we're somewhat flatlined, hovering between 80 and 86.4% over the three questions there, right? 84% is considered a somewhat high rating in response to survey questions in general. The schools get this information disaggregated, which allows them to drill deeper into the why, which then allows them to develop some strategies or approaches specific to meeting students' needs, right? And so, what you're seeing here is a very high-level overview of the district, not disaggregated, for the purposes of understanding general growth across the district. School levels get much more actionable data, right? I will highlight, secondary has seen some growth in goal two that I would consider significant, right? Increase from 44.7% to 52.5%, 56 to 58.1%, 42.4% to 51.8% in some areas, right? So, there is some, some growth there, which we would definitely hope to see, right? Overall, with the district still, overall average being 54% positive response rate to those three survey questions there, right? Also seeing district regular attenders increase from 57% to 59%. Our excellence target, I'll remind you, is 67.5% for the year of 2027. I won't go in tremendous detail on the other data sets. But I will say, for goal number four, ELA, you will see the far-left bar graph for all grades combined, right? Showing a dip by 2% in ELA for goal four, for overall all grades. And to the right of that far-left bar graph, you'll, you'll see varying levels of achievement between the grade levels, right? And for math, again, far-left column shows somewhat of a flat line of math achievement, as reflected by the annual state assessment, right? And again, followed by all the bars across the way showing you how we are progressing by grade level. Again, the fifth goal is ninth grade on track, showing a dip by 3% so far in data. We do spend some time in the summer cleaning up our data, because at the end of the year, it comes at us in significant waves. And Greg Rohr, our data analyst on staff here, collects all that data and scrubs it up for us. So, for goal five, between the graduation rate, completion rate, and the ninth grade on-track rate, we're still working on the final revisions of that data. Are there any questions about the end-of-the-year data report as it pertains to our excellence targets?
I have one. On, under goal one, you have it disaggregated here. I'm curious, so that, for both of, both English and math, that is a bit of a statistically significant change. Did you notice in the disaggregated details, were there still communities that were lagging behind, not growing at the same rate with the general?
Yeah.
I'm going to jump in here and let Dr. Katsuda take the first run at this, and not to surprise the report and not to put Director Olson on the spot, but as we were meeting today, we have the accountability detail reports, and I don't know if they're embargoed at this point. I assume they're, are they? So, that might not be something to publicly share then, so never mind. Dr. Katsuda will share.
We don't have a finalized answer to that, because the state's still looking at some of the data and cleaning it up. I will say, the trend across the board has remained over the last several years that we underserve our multilingual students, whose English is their second or third or fourth, fifth language, and students who are experiencing disability, right? So, and we continue to work on our ability to So and we continue to work on our ability to differentiate and provide supports and services to those students. There's a lot of deep, complex work that's happening, but those two student groups remain to be, we are seeing in the pattern of our data. I don't have the final report on that yet to be able to speak to that with evidence, but that's a good question.
I think this is a good time to take a break and dish up somewhat. So a quick show of hands, do you want to dish up and come back to the table and continue this, or do you want to dish up and take, you know, 20 minutes to eat? Work, keep working. Take a break.
You can't go for a bowl at the same time.
No. Keep working. Break your head. All right, let's take just a few minutes to dish up.
Recording stopped.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
Everyone has been able to fill a plate and we're having a working lunch and continuing to talk about the goals in our roadmap 2027. So back to you, Dr. Katsuta.
Thank you. Before, and so we just looked at the data. I wanted to make sure we answered any questions before we move on to the second part, which is highlighting some of the work that will be taking place around profile of the graduate. Any questions on the data, the report?
On the data in any of the goals, any of the goal statements?
Yeah.
Goal areas?
Yeah.
May I ask, as it relates to goal two, the regular attenders? That just seems to be a challenging nut to crack, right? Attendance. And I know it's been forethought, if you will, our schools. Will you be sharing with us this year any other strategies that we might be thinking about? You know, things that we've learned in the process?
That's a great question. We definitely can. We can go deep into the weeds. We could provide more broad strokes, but there, every school is engaging through our multi-tiered systems of support, which is, you know, as you speak again, we're saying that we have a variety of approaches to serve students who are showing up at various levels, you know, portions of the school day or year, right? So we can bring some of that information back to the board if the board is interested. I know we collect that from the schools in terms of some of the actions they're taking to support student attendance. There's a lot happening in schools in terms of trying to, or working on establishing more authentic partnerships with parents so that we're really communicating around some of the barriers and obstacles to supporting their students getting to school. Attendance rates right here highlight students who are attending at least 90% of the time. But we have also noted in the district, we have significant number of students who are showing up tardy, which is disrupting, disruptive to their learning, and their learning in the classroom, but their learning process as well. So there's a significant amount of work around communication, around supports and partnership with families on that. So if it's of interest to the board, we can bring back some of that information so you know what the actions are behind this work in the school.
And just one more comment about that. I was sitting with the different board members, different districts. And all of us are having the same concern. This is not unique to Centennial, it's everywhere.
Correct.
But our conversation turned to the things that we cannot control. We cannot control poverty. We cannot control lack of childcare, especially when our older students are having to care for their younger students. And so, sometimes I think we need to also reflect on the fact that some of this is not, it's not our fault necessarily. There's, there's some societal issues that we're up against, but the, just the idea that you are bringing back to us, how each of our just, our schools are trying to impact even those societal issues that, you know, like, what kind of support do you need?
Yeah.
And I, I appreciate knowing those things because a number gets out there and without any explanation, then people just say, "Well, that doesn't look good," but do you know that these are the things that, that are impacting and creating that number? So, I appreciate the knowledge just in, so I have a part of those conversations that occur outside of this room.
Absolutely. And it's a good thing to bring up because the theory of action behind establishing attendance as an excellence target or a metric that we're monitoring is that students who attend will learn. And so, we're monitoring that, trying to increase that. There are also other schools of thought for students who are experiencing a variety of barriers outside of their control that prevent them from coming to school, when they do come to school and we are providing the supports, that there's learning that's happening, right? So, we choo, we choose attendance hoping that it's a supportive variable to learning, but we have to recognize it's not the only variable. So, when a student does show up in the classroom, in a classroom environment that is set up to support a sense of belonging, that's academically rigorous and all of that, then we should be able to see growth, right? So, the attendance metric is chosen with the assumption it's going to support that, but it should not be viewed as an outcome, like the outcome that we're shooting for. Of course, we want students to attend, but it's a distal measure, right? And so, it's often challenged because people say, "Well, we see it's a distal measure. If we're providing engaging instruction, that will encourage students to attend more." When we should recognize that some students aren't attending, not because they don't want to, but because of various things happening in their lives, right? And so, it's a good thing to bring up and always view with the critical lens, because you're right, we don't control all those variables, and we are going to continue to work on influencing them, because we do believe the students attend, then they engage, and then they learn, right? So, yeah, absolutely. All right. Any other questions on the excellence target and report?
I have a question.
Oh, you too.
Sorry.
Yeah, absolutely.
Does this data lead you to change the excellence rates or the targets?
Right now, no. As Superintendent Owens said earlier, we're starting to see more traction from our efforts. It's, and we're going to hold on to these goals. We have set excellence targets for, up to the year 2027. So, the targets you see reflected here, the green dashed lines on the graphs actually represent the actual goal at the end of our strategic plan, right? And as far as I see so far, we have not met them. We've seen some growth and we're learning about what's working and what's not, and so we're hoping to stay the course.
Okay.
Yeah. I would say that if we hit the mark and we reached an excellence target, then it's a whole new level of learning and work for us, right? But we haven't, we haven't gotten there yet. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right. No pressure. All right. So, now I'm excited to share a little bit about some of the work we have moving forward. We are going to continue, as I just shared, in response to your question, some of the priority, or the priority areas in terms of our action plan. So, this chart on the, or this page on the left side of the screen, you'll see highlighted in colorful bars, belonging literacy, engagement, attendance, profile of the graduate, all the goals that we were, priority goals that we were looking at just now, right? We are going to continue to focus on those areas. We've decided not to establish new priorities in the year, as we're starting to see traction, but we have not arrived. And, and we, we're learning more about what is making a difference and improving outcomes. So, we're going to stay the course and further examine our practices, and in doing that, really focus on some of the systems we know could use some more development. So, I had mentioned before, multi-tiered systems of support. That is a systemic framework designed to support differentiated instruction and provide escalating levels of academic, behavioral, and social emotional support based on individual student needs, right? And through ongoing professional learning and data-informed decision-making, MTSS or multi-tiered systems of support, can ensure that every student receives the support necessary to thrive and succeed, right? So, in our schools, we have a variety of teams that meet, that examine data, and based on whatever data they're looking at, whether it's engagement data, academic outcome data, there, they gather and plan what their, their response is going to be in instruction or in action or supports, right? So, we'll take attendance as an example, since we were just talking about that. If a student has attendance that is below ninety percent, in fact, they're not attending as much as they should, that team gathers based on whatever level of attendance they have, and devises a plan in terms of communication and outreach to families and supports in and out of school to, to increase the attendance for that student, right? So, multi-systems of support is a critical structure we have in our district and every single school, and it provides levels of support depending on the levels of need that students have, right? In conjunction then with that, we're going to strengthen our professional learning communities. Professional learning communities are foundational practice across the district, bringing educators together to form collaborative teams. These teams, like, I don't know if I mentioned this earlier, organized by grade level, subject area, or relevant groupings of staff, focused on students in the classroom, or groups of students, right? Down to individual students, right? We, and the practices and collaboration amongst staff enhance instructional practice and improves student outcomes. So, in these regularly scheduled meetings, staff engage in collective learning together about some of the best practices and strategies to use in teaching. They examine student work. They then continue to look at data after they've improved and adjusted instruction for students. When implemented with fidelity, PLCs promote a culture of collaboration, strengthen the instructional effectiveness in the classroom, and lead to measurable gains in student achievement. PLCs are used across the nation, probably the world, and there are, when implemented with fidelity, there can be some significant gains for our students. So, we are orienting some of our attention to ensuring that some of these structures are more solidly in place in our schools, right? We're not orienting away from our prioritized goals and actions you see to the left there, but we're paying more attention to the how it happens, and we recognize that collaboratively engaging in some of these improvement practices and constantly looking at data that informs our next step is high leverage, and doing that collectively increases our capacity amongst all staff to be able to respond to students, right? Any questions about that?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, does the MTSS pro, process take into account the individual needs and the needs of the classroom that the individual is in? Because one thing that I hear is that when a student needs extra support in the classroom, sometimes it can be a detriment to the rest of the kids who are then spent, like, waiting while they're clearing a room or doing something, you know?
Yeah.
So, like, how do we, how do you balance that?
I think the key to that is the word tiered, right? So, the way MTSS in its ideal form should work is we're looking at data for all students, and we're really focused on solidifying what we call the core, solid instruction that should serve all students, right? There are students who might present needs, complex needs, or needs beyond that, and the data will show those, who those students are. And in that case, then there are specific team members or staff members in a school then, who will look at that data and figure out what the response should be depending on academic or what have you data they're looking at. And from there, then, what they do is often design a small group intervention or a small group response of some sort to whatever the need might be, whether it's instructional, social, emotional, et cetera, right? There are students who present highly complex needs, in which case, when that shows up in the data, then there's a, this, a group of very specific people with certain skill sets that look at that data and then design a response to that, right? So, the concern that an individual student's need will supersede or influence or negatively impact the whole, in the concept of multi-tiered systems of support is not the issue, right? The, the tiered system actually addresses the fact that there are differentiating needs, and needs of a student at one point may not be the same needs they have later, right? And so, it's supposed to be a responsive system where staff are continually looking at data, but it really is, rests on the foundation that all staff are able to look at all data, and they have data and assessment literacy enough to, when they look at that data, to be able to see the strengths and the needs within their instructional practices, right?
Thank you. Super helpful.
What data is shared with the student themselves?
That's a great question.
I mean, I, sometimes I don't know where I am.
Yeah.
And if I was judged on my math ability in a particular grade at a particular time, I might have been either encouraged to do something different or discouraged by, by the fact that I wasn't doing so well. I picked math because it wasn't my strong suit. But, but having knowledge, a, a student having knowledge about where they are and what they're doing, and if we're student-centered, how do we, or what parts of these things do we want our students to be aware of and shared with them, other than in the IEPs or other kinds of things?
That's an excellent question, and I would even say that a student should know their IEP, right? IEP is about them. They are, they are the most critical partner in their IEP. So, that is a great question, and when we talk about profile of a graduate, I'll expand on it more, but for now, I will say, best practice is students should know where they're at in their learning. They should, they should know the why of their learning. They should understand the goal of their learning, the outcome, right? And we set up administrator observations of student learning with this in mind, that there should be clarity around, for students around their learning, which means they're engaged in understanding the why, the how, and the ultimate goal, right? So, there are look fours when we go into a classroom to see if that, that is happening, right? I would say in best practice is students are very aware of that, and I've seen some teachers in practice, and in fact, common formative measures actually rely on that, right? Students should understand that intricately. So, at the, the end of the class period, or the end of the week, or what, whatever, you know, kind of cycle of, of feedback to the student is about their learning, when they see that, they understand what that, that outcome means to their growth, right? "I, I actually improved in my practice," or "I declined," and then that's when a great conversation can happen between the teacher and their students or student to, to talk about, "Okay, what, what, what do we need to do differently to improve or increase their learning? What did you learn about your learning, and how should we do this differently," right? To engage them? Because the ideal is eventually students don't need us to prompt third learning, because individuals creating that autonomy and independence, right? So, I'm talking about the ideal, and this is something that we're trying to grow in the district. It does happen, but what our ultimate goal is that it's happening more systematically, that students truly are partners in their learning, and when you see it come up in profile of a graduate, you'll, you'll see that pop up everywhere. So, we want to engage students, and it's academically and, you know, personally respectful to talk to someone about their learning and where they need to go, right? So, we really are focused on figuring out how to partner with students on their learning, right? So, that is a really great question. Thanks. All right. Moving forward. So, now, profile of a graduate. When you get this slide deck, it is, the title is hyperlinked to this document that I provide you to a hard copy of, but in case you need it in the future, you can access it digitally as well. Again, for our folks new to the board, profile of the graduate is a guiding vision for our educational system, representing essential knowledge, skills, disposition, interpersonal competencies. It is a guide to ensure that students develop the knowledge and ability to apply 21st century skills, critical thinking, adaptability, collaboration, right, et cetera. We, as a district, worked collaboratively with our constituents, students, families, staff, community partners, to develop the profile of a graduate that you have a hard copy of in front of you. And after we developed that profile, we pulled together a design team, and that design team then continued to work on the development of what does this look like in real practice, in the live sense, right? The design team also collected information from staff members, students, family members, to further refine not only the profile, but then also the action plan, right? So, what you see here in front of you is a highlighted timeline, or high-level timeline of the development of the, what we call the progressions of the profile of a graduate, certain skills, knowledge, dispositions that we want students to have at the primary level, the intermediate level, the middle school level, and the high school level, right? So, the design team gathered in January three times. We also circulated the, what I would call the look fours, or the knowledge, skills, abilities, et cetera, sort of the progressions through AD Council, which is our administrator group, to get feedback on what that looks like, and then continued with repetitive feedback loops with school staff, shared that out with them as well, right? So, there were themes pulled from staff in terms of what it means to enact or actualize a profile of, of a graduate, a vision for teaching and learning, and implications and next steps, right? So, this is a wordy, a, a slide here, but what elevated from all of our conversations is we need to move from traditional to more transformational kinds of practices in teaching and learning, right? Traditional is, I'll just pull out a couple examples from this slide. Traditional will be teacher-directed. That's where teacher stands in front of the room, students are in the tables, often enrolls, teachers are telling them what to do, they're doing it bit by bit. There is very little room for students to cognitively engage with content or process, develop critical thinking, because they're just doing what they're told, right? We would like to move towards learner-directed. That means teachers are facilitating a process, providing them with instructions to engage in whatever material or content they have in front of them, right? In that process, students own more of the process. They'll be able to say, "Hey, teacher provided me a couple options to learn about this particular topic. I learn better this way," right? So, there, there will be options in this particular scenario where students will own more and be able to influence how they learn, and maybe even express what they want to learn more about within that particular concept, right? And then also that students have more opportunity to express their learning, and then also obviously within the process of learning, reflect on that, right? And so, that's just an example of sort of a continuum from traditional to transformational, and you'll see the design team recognized six areas of traditional practices that we feel are highly necessary to move away from in this day and age where students need to be prepared for a future we cannot even imagine, right? And so, you'll see there, the green column represents the ideal of what we want students to be, to be doing, and really the best practice is, we're not, we're, it's important what the teacher's doing, but ultimately, the most important thing is what is the student doing in the classroom, right? Teacher can provide really explicit, highly effective instructions and be missing the mark somewhere, and that still may result in students not doing the learning, right? And so, the green column represents what we hope, what we are aiming to see students actually engaged in there, right? And there's a lot, again, on this, this slide, and when you get it, if you have questions, welcome to reach out. I did hyperlink, I would not consider it the ideal, but in talking with Performance Fact, I said, "There are a couple of outcomes that are very tangible for our staff," and we'll be talking about them in a second. I said, "But give me, give me a sample. If we, if we want to see students who own the process engaging in real-world issues, like what they're learning about is actually happening in the world, not just sitting randomly theoretically in a, in a textbook somewhere." theoretically in a, in a textbook somewhere, right? We're adapting, we're less focused on how quickly or the pace that students are learning, and, and facilitating learning at their rate. We're less about completing a task, and more about the purpose of learning, and we're, we're using measures to inform learning. Like, if we're engaged in all that, what does that actually look like from the student, from the student point of view? So, that performance-based assessment here at the bottom is actually hyperlinked to a sample of a student being videoed presenting their learning, and in a district east of here, students were engaged in learning that was aligned to their profile, had to do an activity where they were introducing themselves. So, really, not a super-complex topic, but they were assessed on their, all sorts of skills, academic skills around reading, writing, speaking, et cetera, but some of the more 21st century skills, right? So, this is a videotape sample of that kind of learning, right? Absolutely. Yeah.
How much of the teacher training program is, especially with our new faculty that'll be coming in, regardless of the faculty that we already have, still center on the very first column of teacher-directed, individual task, et cetera, following a rigid curriculum?
Did you read my notes?
Oh, sorry. Yes, thank you. Whoa. Sorry. I mean, and then we have, and I don't know that it's rigid curriculum, but we are directed in our curriculum by the Oregon Department of Education and other resources, right? But if, if you can't bring in somebody that's already in column, you know, B, I mean, it's a learning curve, right, for our, our faculty that we work with now.
Yeah.
They're, they're going to be moving from the first column to the second column.
Yes.
And we have influence there.
Yeah.
But, do we have influence on teacher training programs? And are we having to always help new faculty members come to that middle ground, or the middle column, I should say?
Yeah, I think, I don't know that I have definitive information to be able to, to respond to that, but I will say, seasoned and new staff members run the spectrum from traditional to transformational right now. And I believe, and I don't know the teacher prep programs up here in Portland, but I do know down south, at University of Oregon, not to promote any university, and even OSU, and not to promote any university, their teacher prep programs have some very transformational components to them, right? They're, and I'll say, it also probably depends on their university professors, and universities' professors span the spectrum, right? So, it depends on who you have and what they promote. But I was personally involved in UVO's teacher prep program, and there was a lot of work around the science of human learning, which is very much the green column there, right? And the fact that traditional column is based on the traditional notion of American schooling, and American schooling wasn't necessarily designed to educate all, right? And so, it's all often rooted in the history, right? And so, they do a lot of, you know, instruction around all of that, and so, I, I don't have an answer to that. I, I do know, it's not out of question that there could be a conversation between teacher prep programs, and we have had them, when we agreed to provide practicum advisors for student teachers. It's like, here's what we do in the district, what, what preparation are they getting to be able to engage in that? We have a lot of work to do in our own district, and, yeah, so I don't have, I don't know necessarily there's one answer to that.
I want to follow up. Is there space in PLCs, or in different places, to have those conversations?
Yes.
Because I think that even teachers who are very much rooted in the green could be faced with a situation where, if we're talking about real-world stuff, the student's knowledge may be greater than the teacher's, and then control of classroom comes into point.
Yes.
So, like, how do we allow for growth i- in our, in our staff and our students throughout this process?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I, I do believe there are many students who probably run circles around us, in terms of language, technology. In fact, many of our students have seen the world, are from the world, and are, you know, are have so many intelligences in so many ways, right? And move rapidly. So, yes, I say PLCs are a perfect place for teachers to engage in this practice. What will be challenging, or what, I shouldn't say challenging, because I don't know yet, but what our work will entail is, what does this look like in terms of what the teachers need to do, educators need to do, to result in some of these practices, in our planning, in what we know? Well, how do we prepare ourselves here, and here, and here, to be able to do this work, right? And so, PLC work is this work, right? And I'll say, probably, some of the more significant shifts for someone who is trained in a traditional fashion is to let go of control, to know that you're the facilitator, right? And that you can't control every variable, and that a quiet, somewhat static, still classroom of students staring down at the desk, isn't necessarily what we would consider learning, right? Allowing the airtime, giving airtime to students, creating deep, rich opportunities for deep and rich discourse between students, right? Providing them more rigorous content, real-world content, so students are solving the world's problems versus a theoretical one, right? And so, there's a lot of work to be done, and it's good work, and I think our teachers are embracing it. They've asked for it, right? And so, yeah.
One thing I would follow up and ask of the district is to provide staff with a cycle of safety, to say, hey, I did this wrong, or I could do this better. How can we all have a conversation where people feel safe to talk about how things are struggling for them? I think that that's, that is, if we really want to get to the green, that's super key.
Yeah. Agreed. Agreed. The vulnerability piece is important, and I think in PLC work, I don't know, April and I were talking about this the other day, because we're, she's reviewing the seminal texts around professional learning communities, and the fact that, you know, the foundation of professional learning communities is, everyone is doing it, no one's excused. You're not the teacher working on a problem, or working on a dilemma, because you have a student. Everyone's engaged, and it requires a level of vulnerability, and it requires creating a culture to say, I don't know how to do that yet, or I'm growing my practice in doing that yet. That's very hard, often, not always, for someone trained in a traditional model, where you have to be the person who knows it all, right? So, some of that is letting go of control, being able to be vulnerable, like as a teacher, with your students and your colleagues, right? So, I, I agree with that.
As you can imagine, I have a lot of thoughts about all of those things, but I'm going to limit myself to two questions slash comments. You used the word PLCs with fidelity. Fidelity is so hard in PLCs. So, my question that is, is the cabinet, superintendent, group of principals going to come together to create what fidelity looks like with PLCs? Question and comment one. Question and comment two, same group of people, are you going to come together and create an ongoing, safe walkthrough system, rubric system, collaboration system, where your teachers can feel like it isn't punishment, but it is encouragement? Becoming a guide on the side is so hard, and I want our teachers to feel, as you can imagine, I want our teachers to feel that they are able to do this as an ongoing growth, not an immediate, you must be like this. So, I'm just curious about those two pieces, the PLC fidelity, and what that walkthrough, rubric, encouragement process will look like for educators.
I'll respond initially, and then I want to ask April to weigh in, because we've been, this is the exact conversation we've been having. So, yes, to the work of PLCs, and I'll let, I'm going to ask April to speak to that in a second. I'll also say, the intention behind learning walks is that they're learning walks. We're learning about learning, we're learning about the best practices, we're observing what we are hoping and intending to learn that shows up in practice, right? That takes a level of humility, and the best learning walks engage as many practitioners as possible, not just administrators. So, this past year, we got there a little bit more, but we started learning walks with just administrators, then, we're at, administrators who felt ready asked a few other leaders on staff to join them. Eventually, the idea is that we're not necessarily the leaders of those learning walks at the district level, that staff have identified their goals in their school improvement plan, they've identified the practices and the student learning they expect to see in the classroom based on their goals and their PLCs. Then when they're doing learning walks, they're learning about what it takes, is it happening, is it not happening, and what, what might be the next steps, right? But they're, they're doing that with each other, in a sort of a feedback-rich way that doesn't rely on a district, or, you know, pinpoint on a principal to lead and facilitate, and I like that model better. It's a very flat model that implies that everybody's learning, right? So, if we're doing our work and evolve that practice, that's the hope eventually, is that it's not unusual for teachers to be in teams observing each other in their practice, right? And then the PLC, do you need, do you have a mic? Oh, you do have a mic.
We do have, you know, essential elements of PLCs and centennial document, and I think where, where it seems to me that fidelity to all of those elements at once is very difficult. So, we'll be working with administrators next week at retreat, to really kind of hone in on what are the critical pieces of those essential elements that we want to focus on this coming year for, to look at that fidelity piece. My, my spidey senses tell me it's going to be co- collaborative instructional planning, you know, where teachers are talking about the instructional strategies they're going to use for first-time instruction to us, to ensure mastery of the skill that students are supposed to attain during that, you know, lesson unit, whatever. And then, how are we measuring that? That common formative assessment piece. So, if we can get really good at those two parts of the cycle this year, then I, I think that we'll move the, the needle a long way toward fidelity of a teacher-learning team.
I was told in a district that shall not be named, that the word, the word fidelity was not a great word to use, it had a lot of implications, and then we started using the word integrity. And I know people don't like to wordsmith, but the nuance of that, because fidelity, the word fidelity come, you know, some of the negative connotation is really around rigid, rigidity of practices in terms of how we implement a curriculum, right? Director Shod, you spoke to a district-adopted curriculum in, in reference to the rigid curriculum call, row there, right? I would say, district-adopted curriculum that's research-based and so forth, is a solidly foundational and essential in professional learning communities. You need a viable curriculum, right? That supports this notion of a viable curriculum. And I would say that the way, just because we adopt a curriculum, and we're implementing it with integrity, that it's not rigid, that a teacher with a critical lens is looking at that curriculum, adopting it, and adjusting it. Some of the curriculum's written by national curriculum development specialists, who don't always share a culturally-responsive lens. There's a variety of things that happen, and it's the critical lens of the teacher that says, oh, I know what the standard is, or the learning target is for this lesson, but I'm going to modify it so that it's more culturally-responsive, or more differentiated, or what have you. But the curriculum serves as a foundational tool in order to meet the standards. So, it's not meant to be used rigid, with rigidity, but with integrity, right? So, yeah. All right.
This is very important.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, because who wants to be part of a rigid system that needs to be flexible for our students, right? And so, we, it's up to us as practitioners to take what we have, to bring it to life in the classroom, right? So...
That's a good question.
Oh, absolutely.
Is there evidence or data, I hope, I assume that there is, that moving to this method of learning has positive results for the students? Or are we just trying it out just to try something different?
Yeah. Yeah. That is a great question. I would say, a lot of what you see in the green column adheres to much of the model around project-based learning. Project-based learning is probably the most effective structure of, of learning for our students, in terms of 21st century skills, right? And so, I'll say, there's a lot of, there is research that backs up these practices, based on what I see through the research of project-based learning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's some disciplines that have been better in order for the work to be discussed.
Yeah. Yeah. It is tied to, so many things are connected, right? And so, again, shifting the role of the teacher and the role of the student from traditional to transformational, you see here reflected, teachers facilitator, they're designing learning experience, they're not directing students to follow instructions only, right? Instructions are, are fine if they lead students to engaging in content, right? But not eliminating students' engagement is not good. So, emphasis on curiosity, problem-solving, having a problem-solving approach to instruction, and really, having problem-solving be a driver to instruction, also promotes that level of engagement, right? And again, role of the students, we've talked about this in the last couple of slides, in a variety of ways, voice, choice, authentic, right? Profile of the graduate design team said that if we are doing all of what we had shared before, in terms of shifting our practices, ideally, and these would be, again, in a more concise sort of frame, our goals is that, and student learning is culturally and linguistically affirming. If we were to use some of our canned, highly-traditional structured curriculum, they would not necessarily be culturally, linguistically affirming, right? And so, again, adopting that research-based and critically modifying it as needed is critical in this way. It's student-owned, so if you think about project-based learning, often students take the, the root or the heart of what they're learning from a dilemma in the community, and then we attach curriculum and standards, content standards to that, right? And students then see a problem that they've developed the capacity to solve, and it's very motivating to them as learners, right? Again, feedback-rich, connected to the community, all of these things, they, they view as sort of the gold standard of what we would want our students to be engaged in, to develop those 21st century skills that are reflected in our profile. So, recommended next steps, we engage with our leaders in the district around the framework that, this framework that I just shared with you, and the shifts in some of our practice. We use the framework to focus instruction for the year. We select one or two areas for administrators to PLC on. So, what does this look like for students in practice? What, then what does that mean for the teacher, in terms of what they need to do? Oh, based on what the teacher needs to do, what does an administrator need to do? So, administrators are engaging in the same, so problem-based cycles of learning as well, right? Engaging with staff. So, staff will have a chance to look at the progressions that I talked about earlier. What does this look like for learners at the primary, intermediate, middle, and high level, in terms of some of these particular elements, right? Their staff will select one quality to focus on, to engage in, and learn more about. And it is highly recommended that they choose academically-prepared. It just gives us a focus, and again, these aren't necessarily things we're not doing already, and it's a, it's an area of high, it's an, it's one of our priorities, let me put it that way, right, in terms of academically-prepared elements, the bullet that I'm stir. The idea is, even though all staff will be learning about the progressions, what this looks like for students in the classroom, and digging in more to the profile elements, and seeing some of the produced work, we're, we're actually working with administrators to identify some pilot staff, pilots in the district, right? And that could look a variety of ways. A grade level at a school could say, we're going to pilot and design instruction that promotes some of these elements, 21st century skills, based on whatever grade band they're in, right? And we're going to be really explicit in our planning, and we're going to form our PLC around that, right? There are some considerations that Performance Fact provided for us, consider elementary and middle school pilots. I already know the high schools expressed an interest to pilot within a department, so one of the departments at the high school is going to really be digging into the academically-prepared, and designing instructions to promote this element in the profile. And then, the idea, of course, with the pilot, is you grow the practice from there, either expand it across more elements, and staff members in the school, right? How do we do this? What are some of the outcomes of this? So, they're going to build out one element of this, academically-prepared, and within that, students will have, there will be some support for them. So, students will have portfolios- So students will have portfolios, um, and we will provide some supports for them to assemble these portfolios of learning. Students will engage in student-led conferences. Students who are engaged in the pilot, where they're then driving the conference, uh, when their parents come in or family members come in for conferences. There are a variety of ways students are going to demonstrate and be the ones expressing their learning. Um, I'll share a little bit more about that in a second, but we're going to build out one of these elements uh, into instruction with, uh, pilot, uh, staff in the schools. Um, oh, I didn't include those details on the next slide. I thought I had another slide. Um, and so, actually, I'll leave it at that because I may have already, uh, covered that. Any questions? High, high level. Mm-hmm.
Like, there's like a running bet on which ones I'm going to ask questions on, right? Like, somehow you guys all talk about this and you already know. Um, are there systems in place to support the teachers that choose to pilot with, um, additional like, um, subs, planning, um, team planning, these kind of things for them so that their workload doesn't increase?
That was, that was a slide I thought I left on here, but I was, uh, encouraged to take it off because there was a lot of detail.
I'll own it. I, she had the implement, she had the implementation slide. I said, too much.
Yes. So there's a much more detailed plan where we are providing time for teachers who are agreeing to pilot to get together and plan at their sites. Um, there's also a plan to support sharing out of what the pilot has meant to them in terms of their practice and their learning at our quarterly data summits to promote the learning and expand the practice, right? Um, there'll be work with principals around how to support teachers engaged in that. So there, there'll be time and supports. Some of the district-level, uh, elements of the system, uh, going to work with the instruction department to, to build out so that, uh, pilot teachers aren't needing to spend their time doing that. So if you've ever been involved in some of the, I would call it low-hanging fruit of the profile work is student-led conferences. There's a whole structure for effective student-led conferences. That is a, a logical element of Profile of the Graduate where students are sharing at critical moments about their learning, right? Well, we at the district level can easily put together some supports for that, a package for that, right? So those are some of the things we're doing at the district level, but the pilot teachers themselves, we're going to support them to the best of our ability in terms of time and all of that, so. Yeah.
Are there, I'm, I'm thinking more, this almost goes back to your first slide with all the, but, but this is kind of going to apply to everything there?
This one?
Yeah. Are there any concerns with this approach? Or with kind of almost some different metrics that we're measuring by? How they might align back to state standards, state assessments, and is there board support that you need?
Absolutely. So, uh, I would say there's not a concern in terms of how it lines up with our metrics. I would say the state assessment is a lagging data point. It's actually more of a byproduct of great learning and practices. Probably the data that is most telling in terms of, uh, student learning and outcomes would be our formative measures and our ongoing measures during the school year, not that once-a-year one. But we rely on our benchmark, our, some of our quarterly measures as well as the annual. I would say the student survey data would be directly impacted by this. So I, I, I would say we're leaning, we're moving towards, uh, this concept of more transformational learning, uh, knowing that it'll have direct impact on, on our outcomes, yeah. And I would also preface by saying, we're not saying that instruction will no longer follow, adhere to state standards, standards of learning, right? Whether it be content standards or, uh, skill standards, all of those will still be in place. It's standards-based design. Uh, however, standards-based design has been very, I don't know, didactic in the past, very adult, you know, driven. And now what we want to do is empower, remove ourselves from directing as much and, and really work with students to be the ones engaging in the doing of the learning, so.
Do we have the implementation slides added up to the board book or part of the Friday?
Do you, do you have the implementation slide now?
Um, I, I do, but I'm going to go off, off-screen, uh, here.
I love you getting the implementation slide. I'm just calling it good. It's a working process. But if you're looking for that, one of the challenges is you've got the pilot who's deciding about, obviously, you're going to have to do it. There are other faculty within the department, or even departments, who are, who are, who need to be kept in the loop as to what the project is, the pilot is, the importance of the pilot. And they might be inspired, um, because they're so high on it within the systems and there's still hierarchies within the departments. You need to be some kind of sensitivity to that. It's like a goal setting, like, we don't always follow the, the premise of a pilot. Because we may not understand it as the people who are doing it. Keeping everybody kind of informed about the process is pretty critical. Because then it starts giving you the implementation by the other side. Uh, then it feels very tough down. Now that wasn't good work, but you weren't there when you were doing it. So that, that's, I'm watching that happen in my world. So, but, okay. Bring me along, you know, inform me, help me understand. You can, you're, you're where you are because you're, you've been, you've been interested in it. And now I'm supposed to help you with it and I am totally quite understanding because I've had that opportunity. So however you bring people in, it's a, a process or sharing process with the pilot. It would have been helpful and mindful, um, because that would have been incremental understanding of it. This is what we're doing.
I love the idea of the, letting the pilot people share how it impacted them. I volunteered a pilot. Then I, well, I just do, um, why not? Um, and that's a piece, I think, that is not standard practice across everywhere is to allow a lot of that actual honest, how it impacted me, how it changed my practice, how it didn't change my practice. Questions I still have. And I think that is going to be a very valuable piece to onboarding other staff and other teachers because in my personal experience, and I'll only speak for me, I listen to teachers more often than I listen to principals. Shocking. So that's, that's the people you have to hook, hook in to do the transformative change. So thank you for including that piece and I think that's awesome.
I, I would like to add one more thing and that is ensuring that there are multiple ways that that happens. Some people get, like, some people will sit in a quarterly data summit and feel really connected with that. Somebody else may need to see it written in an email, right? And so ensuring that that feedback from the teachers is given in multiple methods.
Absolutely agree. And I'll say, um, just be honest, it, uh, the communication that you had mentioned earlier is one of our challenging parts because the few of us are so busy planning and trying to do it that we often don't leave enough time to promote and communicate, coordinate with Christine, et cetera. So, um, that's going to be work that we're going to engage in. But that's often what falls off a little bit because we're so busy trying to do it, right? So, and I do agree, we need multiple ways, yeah. Um, so what you see here is, again, this is very high level. There's a much more detailed one because we love our docs. Um, but you'll see here, um, there's a pilot plan that's hyperlinked to academically-prepared, um, progressions. But fall, winter, spring, there are specific dates where we have, uh, pilot folks coming together. They're, they're engaging, it's the second row there, engaging in professional development, reflection, collaborative planning for implementing, uh, Profile of the Graduate approaches to learning, right? And they're going to, the hope is that they're, and we haven't yet set the specific dates, which is why I say hope. But this, the hope is they're doing that once, once a month, right? And that feels supported, supportive to them. We'll collect feedback. If it doesn't feel supportive, we'll figure out how to make it feel supportive, right? So, and then this concept of, again, there are so many ways where students own and take control, uh, have power to express what they're learning, reflect on their learning and so forth. Uh, we chose one that we feel is not, uh, super-complex and outside of some of the existing practices in the district, but we want to elevate it and ensure that it's high-quality, is the student-led conference, right? Students involved in the pilot will have an opportunity at their fall and winter conferences to actually lead their conference. This is what I'm learning. This is why it's important. Here's my next step in learning that I've, I've developed based on my reflection and looking at information. It's part of that goal-setting you were talking about. When do students know about their own goals and whether or not they're actually making, you know, taking steps or meeting those goals, right, towards? Uh, and then high school conferences as well, uh, students involved in the pilot will then lead their conference. And they'll be a supportive sort of frame or package that they can use. We've used digital portfolios. I've always done student-led conferences as a principal in all the schools at all the levels that I worked at. It's very effective. Um, but we've asked the students to put together a digital portfolio, which is snapshots, audio. Often they're filming their externships in the community. There's all sorts of things they're pulling together to express what they've learned to whoever, right? And then the trimester data summit, practitioners will showcase uh, their, their products, their reflection, their learning, that what they view as the next steps in, in sort of evolving or growing their practices around, uh, ensuring that students are learning in this particular way, so. Um, and the last but not least, um, there is a goal to develop a district-wide Profile of a Graduate Student Learning Summit where students who are engaged in the pilot across the district, pre-K-12, post-12, can come together in one spot. And we'd have organization where there's venues for them to actually present their learning to an audience. Right? And project-based learning students present to an authentic audience. So if a student's doing a project on saving the watersheds, then they're presenting to researchers, right? That kind of thing, uh, authentic audience. So if this one's not, maybe not authentic audience, but the community about their learning, whatever it is that they were learning. And they'll be really explicit and transparent around, here are some of the goals of the learning that are identified or through the profile. So that is high level of some of the elements. We're trying to keep the pilot small. That's hard for us to do in Centennial. We like to supersize everything. And so, yeah, so you'll see, uh, this, we're trying to keep it very small. But in the future, uh, I mean, as we grow this, if we're successful here, as we see success, we'll continue to grow. And obviously, the goal is to not be piloting, that we're all engaged in this and growing this practice, so. Absolutely. It should be pretty fun.
So I'll offer for the record, you were, you were right. I was wrong.
Is your microphone on for that?
The green light is on. Everybody got to hear.
Um, that was a lot. Can we take five more minutes to like stretch, walk, breathe? Do what you need.
Recording stopped.
...
Recording in progress.
All right, we are back in action, 136. Next up on our agenda is Board Committee Representative Assignments. One of the papers that you have in front of you looks kind of like this lovely rainbow-colored one. What this covers are the different committees and things that board is involved in or has been involved in over the years. So you'll notice there's some current ones. And if, you know, you jump to the back, there's a lot of things that we don't need to have this year. Some of these additional opportunities here, I mean, I don't know if that athletic boosters thing is even still happening. However, take a look at this. We are hoping to get folks who are interested in any of these things scheduled to them.
For clarification about long-range facility planning? It, right now, it says monthly January to May of '26. Are we going to get it done in just this singular year, we think?
Good question. Unfortunately, Dr. Southerson isn't here to back me up on the question, but nevertheless, I can, I can take it on my own. There he is. Question there is with regard to long-range facility planning. We met yesterday, as I mentioned before, with representatives from DLR and went through some tentative scheduling that they had done, knowing that we were trying to backwards map. If the board decided that they wanted to go for a bond in, a continuation bond, let's say in fall of '27 or May of '28, for example.
Yeah.
How do you plan backwards? And are we too early in the long-range facility planning process or not? And it was determined that we're at a good place, this is a good time to start it, and it gives us some breathing room. Last time we went through, it was a little bit more condensed in terms of timeframe. So as we talked about this, some of what we talked about was potentially, they walked in with a draft timeline, potentially pushing some of this back out where if it's not fall-spring this year, maybe it's spring-fall next year. So to directly answer your question, as it pertains to the community-based workshops and the community listening sessions, what those look like right now are, as per the draft of the template that we got yesterday, monthly Jan. And this is for the community-based workshops, the six specifically, January, February, March, April, May, for the six. And then two community listening sessions spotted in there. That could shift a little bit, probably not by much. And then there may be the incorporation of two more community-based workshops, and those could extend into the fall. So that's hopefully to answer your question. That schedule is still in pencil and yet to be completely finalized. That's why you see it not committal on that red cell there.
Then if people are considering stepping up in that, it's for sure January through May of this year and potentially some additional time in the fall next year for continuity.
Yeah, and I'd love to actually provide a little context to the sheet on a whole, beyond what Chair Solaski shared here, which is, and to Director Hardin's point earlier being explicit around where we need board members. What I see, and I'll kind of go per each one, on the long-range facility planning, we don't know when those workshops will be. I'm assuming they will be somewhat similar to the traditional scheduling parameters that you see there, one per month, which is the way it's sketched out now, probably something in the range of 5:00 to 7:30 and rotating between schools. As far as board liaisons, it would be, this is my vision for what this would look like, is as many board members as can participate actively and consistently in long-range facility planning, the better. So period, stop. And it would be good to have one or two dedicated liaisons that are saying, "This is my thing," and can be kind of the point people for that project. I don't know, Vice Chair Shields, if that tracks, because your tenure on the board predates my involvement at the district level. But that's my, that's my thought there. Does that track?
Yes, absolutely.
As far as the district equity committee, and I'll lean on Dr. Katsuta here as well on this topic to clean up anything that I missed. What you'll see here is a list of dates, and this is established as a, as we had talked about in the spring, and the board approved the roster of individuals who would be on this committee. This is an evolution from the equity committee efforts that we've had over the years to now the state mandated one, not that we're doing it because of the state mandate, but it needs to conform with the requirements of the state requirements for district equity committees. And so the kind of essential question here is, do we want a board member liaison to the equity committee? Or do we want an equity committee liaison to the board? So that's kind of a nuanced question that Tasha can kind of fill in a little bit more. But it's really up to how the board wants to structure its engagement with the district equity committee. And that format does not require a board member to be on it. So it's kind of a how we want that format to look. Do you want to offer any additional comment to that specific point? Okay. As far as the budget committee is concerned, you see it in yellow, it actually continues on to the next page. This is just for reference to reinforce that the entire board is involved in the budget committee. And so the budget committee comprises of 14 members, seven of which are the board members, plus seven community members, which comprise the committee. And this is just to kind of keep everybody's outside-the-board-meeting involvements and engagements in one contained place, being the sheet. The additional opportunities I rolled forward, as Chair Solaski had mentioned, some of this could be outdated, but I didn't want to miss anything. And so I'm seeing this as, you know, you could put a draft watermark across this, too, this being a draft. And then we can assess what's still happening and relevant, and if anything needs to be added. And to the point that was made, I believe, at the last board meeting as well, the Legislative Policy Committee for OSBA is reflected with Director Lynn's involvement identified as well. And then as Chair Solaski mentioned on the blue portion here, previous opportunities, just for reference. So we know that in the future, you know, let's say next year, we have some strategic planning, as I talked about before, not as robust as before, but we'll probably have something going that'll make it back up into the upper cells for representative there. That's what I got.
One thing I will, I'll say is that this athletic boosters, there was a group of folks who were meeting from the community to further athletics. There also is an athletic, like the high school booster committee that happens, right? And so I'm not sure if, if there's more communication that we want to have there or not. I think that the, the, yeah, the original, like, greater community athletic boosters thing has definitely fallen off.
Yeah, and there was the ideal athletic committee.
That's what I was thinking that was.
We had Kevin Bryant as the athletic director, and he had that. And that, I think, was separate from this. So to be honest, I don't know. I just kept it there because it was there before, but I don't know.
That's gone away.
Yeah, that's, that kind of went with him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But knowing that they're like similar to, like, the district equity, like, there's already a group of people doing athletic boosters. Would we want any communication between the board and that group? I don't, I don't know.
I'll kind of leave it to the board to determine how they want to see their engagement.
Does anyone, let's see, how do we want to do this? Does anybody want to, like, throw their name out there for long-range facility planning?
I do.
Great.
Well, since all of us should try.
Yeah.
My understanding, try to be at meetings if you can, but one will be like the liaison.
Yeah.
And one.
Two, yeah, okay.
One or two, yeah, ideally two, but.
I think the idea of two is good, it's just one couldn't pick it. But you've always got a board process. This thing is incredibly.
Right, it just has no dates. I can't commit to somebody that doesn't have a date nor a point in time. I was like, can't do that.
Fair, fair point.
One thing I would say about the long-range facilities planning also is this is just the start of it. It actually won't be done until 2028 when we go to a vote. Like, and even after that, there's bond oversight. So it's never actually, it's going to build and grow. So if, if you're like, hey, you know, but, so.
I think we're good with one, knowing that more people, like, as we get dates and stuff, will probably be able to commit. District Equity Committee.
Is this the one that you said could have a liaison from equity to us versus us as a liaison to them?
Yeah, and by, by statute, the way it's organized is as a budget committee vacancy comes open, there's somebody from the District Equity Committee who joined, who is appointed to the Budget Committee. That's not the board, obviously, but that's an idea for how that format works in terms of having that crossover. So it's really up to the board to decide, do we want to have somebody commit to being present and contributing to the meetings? Or would you prefer to see somebody from the committee provide, you know? I don't know what even that would look like, but provide periodic updates to the board? Or that committee provides updates and that person's kind of a lead person to do it?
This is something I'm pretty passionate about. And since I won't be having board leadership, I feel like this is something I can commit to, if folks are open to that.
Do it.
Taking things off, so this is back on. All right. Any conversation about any of the other ones need to happen?
Just a question about, and don't hurt him. Are these dates already on our calendar? I mean, I accept things, you know, see, I accept things all the time from the, but budget comes from the halls. I just wanted to do these dates.
It's on the board calendar.
You need to approve the calendar today, and then it'll, then it'll go on your calendar after that.
The date should, will be when.
Yeah, we will figure that out.
And the date should be on your calendar anyway, because it's a board work session. So really, I'm just going to be extending the calendar invite to include the budget. Yeah, we, so. But it does need to be approved by me, so.
Yes.
More, thank you, appreciate that.
The Arts and Music Foundation, I don't know if that is happening or that the district is involved with this specific foundation. I think that there's been a
A split.
A split.
Yeah.
In different, yeah. So I don't know if that's going to be.
May I bring a report back on that? Please, just to see where we are with it, because it did split, and there's reasons for it, and there's rules on the other side. And so we just want to know what structures, I could come back with a
I think that would be fantastic.
What the structures are, and then a decision maker about involvement.
Yeah. So there's two separate groups now.
There's not enough clarity to make some decisions.
No, there is not at this point.
I mean, yes, I'd like to stay involved with the
Yes.
The arts side of things, but.
Did those, can you, in your report, can you let us know, are any of those like official 501(c)(3)'s or anything?
I know one is, but I don't know about the other.
It would be, it would be good to know that.
Okay.
Bring us the tea.
There you go.
Anything else?
Just, David, can you tell us what, are you interested in continually or what it involves if you're not interested? Because don't we all have somebody on the, on the EST Budget Committee? Does every board have a liaison? So what does that entail?
It was a quick open and shut meeting. It sounded like they already had a chair decided on beforehand, and then they opened it, and we all voted, and it was closed. Takes about 15 minutes.
So no other structured meetings in that range?
Interesting.
Is the East County Portland Tech's a finance and community school operational?
It has not been staffed yet. I don't think Prosper Portland was giving any deference to school districts. So you don't need to have my name on there. I apply, I had to apply as an individual, and if I serve on it, it'll be in my own individual capacity. Thank you.
All right, as more comes from that, we'll just keep everybody in the loop. All right, moving right along, confirmation items. Confirmation items have been submitted in board book. Can I get a motion to approve the confirmation items en masse?
Make a motion to approve the confirmation items en masse?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oh, all those opposed? All right, we have six approved and one opposed. Action items. New business. Superintendent Owens, would you like to introduce this item?
Great. So Director Southerson and I, as I've mentioned a couple of times during this board retreat, met with So Director Southerson and I, as I've mentioned a couple of times during this board retreat, met with DLR representatives yesterday. We have the approve awarding contract for facility planning and community outreach up for the board's consideration. I will let Director Southerson provide a little bit more detail as warranted here.
Great. So as Superintendent Owens stated, we are recommending award to DLR group. We had five respondents. We interviewed three of them. And DLR was highly rated and selected by the selection committee. Members included several members of the district administration. Israel is Rod Betcher, who's a longtime participant in long range facilities planning and the 2020 general obligation bond campaign. So the total award is for $174,435. It's estimated to be just under 1,200 hours worth of work over approximately 12 to 18 months, including extensive community engagement and stakeholder and staff engagement. Welcome, any questions you may have?
For, yeah, the copy, I can send it in.
All right.
Motion to approve awarding the contract for the facilities planning and community outreach with DLR.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Future agenda items.
Tough hand. Cell phone, cell phone update from Aaron and April, right? I mean, you guys have been meeting, right? So we'll hear more about where the project is.
Would you be willing to give us just a high level primer in terms of the efforts that you have been making with Mr. Miller?
Last week, we took advantage of having students around for summer school and did some listening sessions at the high school, as well as at the middle school, with students and at the high school with, with staff. Got some good clarification with students on, you know, where there were decision points and where there were not. And a strong desire from the staff to, to have some kind of consistent little P policies in place in the fall so that we aren't trying to change things up mid-year so that implementation can be stronger. So that's where we are now. I am in communication with the rest of the secondary administrators about what kind of further outreach we'll be doing in the fall as we're ramping up. And we're still awaiting a sample policy from OSBA as well.
And there was a group, not to take us too far off track, but there was a group convened via the ESD related to some engagement. Can you speak to that?
Yes, Friday morning, I'll be meeting with, I can't remember the name of the group, but they, they do like rapid input, a process procedure that we can learn about and then facilitate with, with our stakeholders in order to get further input.
Thanks. Sorry, I just figured we would tee it up a little bit.
You were talking about the staff input about something in place as we begin the school year?
More like just consistent expectations around how we're enforcing our current policy so that it's, which is off and away.
Right. More to come.
Yes.
Are we anticipating any budget implications or additions because of the cell phone policy?
We're trying not to.
Okay.
There are options that, you know, would have a budgetary cost. There are pros and cons to some of those options.
Yes. Great, thank you.
And we have till the end of October to actually craft the policy, right?
To adopt the policy. By the end of October.
Thank you for the clarification, yes.
And we'll be adopting the policy by the end of
And then January for full implementation.
Thank you.
We also have the introduction of our new Centennial Middle School principal. We have our standard slate of reports with our new student reps, as well as the superintendent report. And then we're also scheduled to have the Integrated Programs annual report.
All right. Anything else from the, from the board or administration on future agenda items? Anything for the good of the order?
I just want to say thanks, Rose, for being the chair. It's your last meeting as the chair.
It's been really fun.
You've done a good job. Thank you.
I, I, I like to joke a little bit about when I came on the board that the only thing that the board could agree on was that nobody knew anything about me. And there, so there was, like, I was, I feel like one of the things that I, that I am proud of is how we have come together as a board, even though there's disagreements and, you know, differences of opinions. We are very, we're a very professional board, and I appreciate each and every one of you for showing up in that way. And I'm looking forward to being a board member. Any else for the good of the order? All right, we are adjourned 158.